Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and open up tonight's July eighth meeting on the Kalispel City Planning Commission. And I wanna point out this is the Planning Commission. I know there's been some comment online, social media that this is the City Council, this is the Planning.
Could you speak up a little?
Sorry, my mic wasn't on, so. I just wanna point out that this is the Planning Commission, this is not the City Council. It was kinda put out there on social media that this was a City Council meeting tonight, so I wanted to clarify that aspect of it. And I'm gonna go for a roll call.
Rory Young?
Here.
Kate Walker?
Here.
Pip Burke?
Here.
Shelby Lechrone? Shelby Lechrone?
Here.
Doug Kaufman?
Here.
Joshua Borgart?
Here.
Chad Graham?
Here.
Quorum is present. I'm gonna look for approval of the June tenth minutes.
I'd move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. I'm gonna go ahead and open tonight's Hear the Public. This would be for any public comment not currently on tonight's public hearing. Just basically general public comment. If there is any general public comment, please step to the mic and state your name and address. Okay, I'm gonna close tonight's Hear the Pu- So, yeah, so when we get into tonight's public hearing, which is the agenda item for tonight, there'll be public, there'll be time for a public comment for that. So I'm gonna close Hear the Public on any general public comment and get in tonight's, get into tonight's public hearing, which is Files KA dash twenty-five dash zero five and KCU twenty-five dash zero four, North Meadows Development LLC, a request for annexation, initial zoning, and conditional use permit for a multifamily residential development at eighteen fifty-nine South Meadows Drive. The proposal includes annexation of approximately twelve point one-three acres into the city, initial zoning of RA one residential apartment, and a conditional use permit to allow construction of ninety-nine multifamily residential units within seven buildings, along with a clubhouse and associated amenities. Get into the staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. Don McBeth, Planner Two.
Mr. President, I need you to recuse myself.
Go ahead. Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your time tonight. We're here to present the North Meadows Multifamily Project. A request for annexation, initial zoning to RA dash one, a conditional use permit for a new residential development in Kalispel. This proposal supports the city's goals for compact growth, housing diversity, and responsible infill, and is designed to integrate well with the surrounding neighborhood. I'll walk you through the key elements of the request, starting with a project overview. The project is located at eighteen fifty-nine South Meadows Drive and includes approximately twelve point one-three acres of undeveloped land. The applicant, Roger Foley, represented by Jacola Engineering and Architecture, is proposing a ninety-nine unit multifamily development comprised of seven two-story apartment buildings, a clubhouse, parking, sidewalks, and recreational amenities. The site is within Kalispel's annexation boundary and is bordered on all three sides by city limits. The proposed RA dash one zoning aligns with the urban residential designation in Kalispel's growth policy and allows this type of medium density with a conditional use permit. This parcel lies within Kalispel's adopted annexation boundary and is bordered by city zoning on three sides, east, south, and west. To the north, the property is bounded by Ashley Creek and a riparian corridor, which provides a natural buffer and a valuable open space within the urban landscape. While the site has historically remained rural and undeveloped, the surrounding area has transitioned over the past two decades into a fully urbanized neighborhood, featuring city infrastructure, residential subdivisions, and public services. This project represents the final piece of the infill in a well-established urban corridor. Its annexation and development allow for logical extension and municipal boundaries, efficient use of existing utilities, and the completion of a cohesive residential fabric in this part of the city. The project aligns with Kalispel's growth policy's urban residential designation, which envisions a range of housing types at moderate to higher densities in areas supported by infrastructure. The proposed RA dash one zoning district permits multifamily residential development at a scale that balances density with neighborhood compatibility. It encourages compact, efficient land use and supports the city's goals for housing, variety, affordability, and infill development. By comparison, R four, surrounding neighborhood, and the proposed RA dash one have the same allowable density. By situating ninety-nine residential units on an infill site already served by public water, sewer, and roadways, the project advances key objectives in the growth policy, including minimizing sprawl, optimizing municipal service delivery, and providing attainable housing within the city's urban core. The proposed use is consistent with both the character of the surrounding area and the city's long-range planning vision. The development includes seven two-story apartment buildings and a central clubhouse with more than four point eight acres of open space. The site plan initially configured to cluster buildings along the southern and western edges of the property, preserving the northern boundary as a broad natural buffer adjacent to Ashley Creek. This approach maintains ecological integrity, reduces flood risk, and protects the creek's riparian corridor. The layout is sensitive to the existing neighborhood contact. Proposed building heights are limited to approximately thirty-three feet, well below the maximum allowed, and setbacks exceeded in the R one zoning requirements. Landscapes and buffers and fencing further soften visual impacts, enhancing privacy to ensure compatibility with the surrounding single-family homes. Altogether, the design prioritizes both environmental stewardship and thoughtful neighborhood integration. The proposed buildings are clustered on the southern portion of the site, intentionally positioned to preserve and protect the Ashley Creek corridor along the northern boundary. A variable buffer ranging up to two hundred feet has been maintained from the top of the creek bank, consistent with the best practices for the riparian protection. This area will remain undeveloped and retain native vegetation, helping to stabilize the creek bank, support wildlife habitat, and filter stormwater runoff. In total, the development will include approximately four point eight acres of open space. A comprehensive stormwater management system will be implemented to treat and detain rainfall onsite. Ensuring water quality and reducing downstream impacts, these design strategies reinforce the city's goals for environmental stewardship and sustainable site development. The traffic impact study estimates approximately six hundred and sixty-seven average daily vehicle trips at a full build-out. Peak hour volumes are projected to be within acceptable thresholds, and all surrounding intersections are expected to maintain a level of service of C or better, consistent with the city's transportation standards. The development includes a public extension of South Meadows Drive, constructed to local street standards with curb, gutter, sidewalks, and boulevard landscaping. Internally, the site features twenty-six-foot-wide private drive aisles that meet city specifications for two-way traffic and emergency vehicle access. Pedestrian connectivity is addressed through an integrated sidewalk network that links buildings, parking areas, and recreation spaces, and connects to the existing public sidewalk system. Together, these elements support safe and efficient circulation, reduce the need for external vehicle trips, and align with the Kalispel's growth policies emphasis on multi-modal connectivity and neighborhood integration. And at the end of the slides, we have a map, and we will go a little bit more into detail with this. All municipal services will be available upon annexation. Infrastructure is already in place, and no significant off-site improvements are required. The site is appropriately located and thoughtfully designed to complement its surroundings, maintaining compatibility with the adjacent single-family neighborhoods. The project incorporates landscape buffers, privacy fencing, and strategic building placement to soften transitions between land uses and reduce visual impacts. These elements help preserve the neighborhood character and minimize disruption to nearby residents. By offering a mix of housing types in an area already served by infrastructure, this development supports the city's long-term housing goals while integrating seamlessly into an established residential fabric. The overall design prioritizes compatibility continue and balanced approach to infill development. This project meets all applicable conditional use permit criteria and reflects a well-balanced site design. It exceeds minimum requirements for open space and parking remains comfortably within the, I'm sorry, and parking remains comfortably within the height limits and incorporates measures to minimize noise and lighting impacts. The layout supports a compact urban form while maintaining a meaningful buffer and respecting the site's environmental context. Pedestrian connectivity and recreational amenities are integrated throughout, enhancing overall livability. The CUP provides a clear framework to ensure that the development is consistent with the city's design standards and remains compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the annexation, initial zoning, and conditional use permit with the adaptation of the corresponding staff reports and conditions of approval. The proposal is consistent with Kalispel's growth policy, aligns with the city development standards, and advances key community objectives. It thoughtfully integrates new housing while protecting environmental resources and ensuring compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. And then, as you can see here, this is the layout of the property. And where the traffic, let me see, put the... There we go, pointer. So as you guys can see, right here is the cul-de-sac for the traffic. So the traffic will be coming in, and there is no plan anywhere up in here for them to ever continue this road or have it go forward. There's just gonna be a cul-de-sac that goes in here and turns around. Yeah, so if there's any questions, thank you, Commissioners, we would be happy to answer.
Any questions, Staff?
Yeah, doesn't that say temporary cul-de-sac?
Yeah, it does. Or did.
But that's gonna be permanent, right?
Yeah, there would have to be a cul-de-sac. I think the way that we wrote the condition kind of addressed that that would be developed as a permanent cul-de-sac, but could be removed if that future street connection is ever made up to Sunnyside.
Okay, that makes a little more sense now why it was labeled that way. Thank you, Keith.
I didn't see anything about phasing or anything. Are they proposing doing all seven buildings at once, do you know? Or what's the plan? Do we know?
My, this is assumption, I do believe they're planning on doing them all together, the whole property.
Any other questions, Staff? So I think I heard during the staff report that the R four and RA one carry the same densities. There's like an overlap?
Yeah, they're the exact same densities within that area.
Allowable density.
Allowable density, yeah, yes.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and open this item up. What? Oh, Shelby, okay.
You guys said, had said that there would be like some sort of private fencing or something? Is that those fuzzy-looking black lines that are on that, that map right there, or?
So are you looking, are you looking at these lines here?
Yes, I'm looking at those thick ones in between the buildings and kind of surrounding each side of each building.
Yeah, so that's, that's not a fence, that's just the, how many yards are in between? That in the open space in the top bank of the slope? So they're just giving a reference of what the geotechnical survey distances are between the building and the slope and the grade. The fencing, I would, I would assume, and they could probably clarify, would be right around this area right here? Is the pointer working?
Pointer's working for you guys, but not for me.
There we go.
Oh, there we go.
There we go. So the fencing area would be here?
Yeah, it's getting a little worse.
And then this area here is what's represented by the slope and distance between the units and theirself and the bank. And then, as you can see here, the clubhouse would be located right here. Then units, and this would be a four unit on this side. Parking with a hammerhead extension for emergency turnout, emergency access.
Shelby, did you have any other questions?
Oh, got it, thanks.
Any other questions from board? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open this item up for a public comment. Any public comment, please step to the mic and state your name and address. And we do this once, so make sure you're able to go through and get your thoughts out during your, your time at the podium.
Hi, Rhonda Hawkins, seventeen thirty-one Bluestone Drive. I've lived at my address for over twenty-one years now. And we've watched our children and lots of children take their bikes and go down to the park at the end of the road on Bluestone. And that's right off of Airport Road. When my kids were little, the traffic was bad enough then for them and the congestion at the end of Bluestone Drive, where I did not allow them to ride their bikes down there by themselves. There's no, there's no sidewalk along Bluestone. My concern is primarily with this project, all of the vehicles and the safety hazard that will happen with all of those vehicles coming in and out of one, it looks like one road of South Meadows onto Bluestone Drive, where most people will go down to Airport Road. I've watched kids and families try to maneuver around the vehicles that are there now without any sidewalks. And I'm concerned that the city and the planning department isn't taking into the effect of safety when they are proposing a safety plan for the city of Kalispel, but they're ignoring safety in a neighborhood with lots of families and children. My additional concern is only one way in and out of it, of this community for these apartments with all of the people that will live there. I don't know what would happen if there's a fire. That's, that, I, that is astounding to me. So I hope you'll consider looking at this and looking at the need for safety along that road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Please refrain from doing that. There could be people in the audience that are for this project, and it's very inti- don't. There could be people in this audience that are for this project, and it's intimidating for them to get up and speak when that is happening. So, believe me, I've done this for a long time, and I know that that to be a fact, so. Thank you, ma'am.
Diana Marshall, nineteen twenty-three Bluestone. Also, just to add to that, there's a ballpark down there that gets extremely congested, adds to the congestion in the summer, and makes Bluestone barely even a one-lane road to get in and out of. And so that, to me, has that been figured in, or? That's my concern, too.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lysinah Harrow, one one nine Rimrock Court. I am off to the side of this, so it really doesn't affect me directly. However, the traffic does affect me. Bluestone is already congested, as mentioned by the two other ladies in front of me, but we're not taking into account Sunnyside, the bridge in Sunnyside, and that West Side neighborhood has no sidewalks either for the children going to Flathead High. And those streets in the morning, as I am a morning commuter, are already extremely congested with the traffic from our area as well as people going to work at the courthouse, coming off of the bypass, which adds additional traffic. And I don't think this has been taken into consideration. Also, the West Side does not have sidewalks as well, as I think I mentioned, which puts children at a concern. I'm also concerned about the amount of the residential, it's ninety-nine apartment building, residences quite a lot when we already have the silos that has multiple availability as well as the new several-hundred facility at Woodland Park, which hasn't, is not got any residents at this time. And there's the new location up on Meridian as well that has availability. So is there really truly a need to plop several apartment buildings in the middle of two established quiet residential locations of single-family homes? So please, please take that into account, because we also have that huge apartment complex over on Airport Road that has availability as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Ricky Moffett, and I live at one four seven Rimrock Court. My backyard would border the proposed project. I disagree with this proposed development, and I recommend that the Planning Council please disapprove this project for the following reasons. Safety risks to nearby homes, so two. This proposed development, it actually borders Ashley Creek, unknown geotechnically unstable area. Two neighboring properties located at one twenty-seven Rimrock Court and one thirty-one Rimrock Court have already suffered significant property and structural damages. In two thousand and eleven, this was documented in a Daily Interlake article, and I've got sources that I can give you, too, if you'd like to, to see this. Anyways, with those two areas, this, it started in two thousand and eleven, it's two thousand and twenty-five. Fourteen years later, they are still recovering from this landslide where their backyards literally opened up and fell off the face of the earth on this creek bed. Approving construction of a ninety-nine unit complex on such a fragile terrain increases the risk to current and future residences. I just don't think that it's a safe spot to build. The article references a geologist making note of the soil and several other multitude of problems, which went into factoring why that landslide happened. Documented creek instability exceeds environmental safety thresholds. Today, I came across an article from the Montana Department of Transportation, and that cites thirty-two percent of the stream banks in the project reach are unsustainable and classified as eroding. So this was just done in two thousand and twenty-one, and it was done around the bypass, so in very close proximity to this proposed project. Additionally, the majority of the stream bank was dominated by bare ground with a root stability index of just one. The highest score you can get is six, the lowest score you can get is one. So it's not a safe spot to put anything else, that you should not be disrupting that ground. These conditions highlight ongoing erosion and support concerns about slope failure and landslide risk. I really hope that you take that into consideration with disrupting this ground with such a big project. Environmental degradation, so the wetlands and creek corridor, that area supports a diverse wildlife, and it serves as a habitat to some duck species. There's pheasants, fox, deer are around that area as well. It is a marshy area as much as this development, even Ashley Meadows was built on marshy areas. But I've heard from several neighbors that their kids would play out there and always come back muddy. It's just not stable, solid ground. The wetlands in the creek corridor, like I said before, it's a habitat for animals. High-density development here would harm this ecosystem. I don't know if fish, wildlife, and game has been contacted or connected with this project, but I would hope that that would be consulted. Furthermore, strain on taxpayer-funded infrastructure. So several times throughout this proposal, I've heard that infrastructure is already in place, and I found a discrepancy in that. I called personally myself today to the city and asked if there were services in line, because it seems like to be annexed in or to have a conditional use permit and to change zoning, that just seems like there isn't already infrastructure in place. The answer that I received on the phone today, this afternoon, was that there was not anything in place. So I would really want to know the truth, if there is or if there is not existing water, sewer, utility services. That was also mentioned in a report that was made in an article in the Daily Interlake today. So anyways, this area would require city water and sewer, and sewer service through annexation, which places financial and operational strain on our city's systems. While property taxes have increased significantly, Kalispel's average annual property tax collection grew by nine point seven-four percent, something that every homeowner has felt in our area. Outpacing inflation and income growth, this is cited in the Montana Department of Revenue's report from two thousand and twenty-four, this project would stretch resources like police, fire, emergency response, and road maintenance thinner than ever. So we're paying more, and we would be receiving less services. Conflicting statements about the infrastructure readiness, excuse me. Again, like I said, I'd verbally spoken to an employee of the city today who did not see any evidence of existing utilities on there. It just makes me concerned of whether the report that they're giving or the report that they've gotten is, is actually fact. Public education, that's another really, really big concern. It's already over capacity. My own child was redirected from, he was supposed to go to Rankin Elementary. One of the reasons we bought our home over there was so that he could go to a brand-new school, had to go to a different school because they were full. There's a brand-new apartment complex on, goodness, it's right across from, from Rankin Elementary. One of the comments from a teacher last year, unprovoked, was where are all of these kids going to go to school? And that's not even full yet. I don't see how another apartment facility complex would solve that issue at all. Rankin, right now, it serves four hundred and twenty-six students, and it's grown by six percent in the, in the past five years. The student-to-teacher ratio there is seventeen to one. The Montana State average is twelve to one. It's already full, it's busting at the seams. Kalispel Middle School, they serve over a thousand students, and they've just previously, in the last two years, been at capacity. Flathead High School is nearing its cap of seventeen hundred students. Adding families from ninety-nine new units exacerbates a problem this district is already struggling to address. Taxpayers are also shouldering this with the newly passed levy, not saying it's not needed, but the just-passed levy, it's just more and more fees to pay for less and less services. Traffic congestion and neighborhood disruption. This proposed plan includes only one access point, and at my point of reading this, I thought South Meadows Drive would go all the way through. It's even worse now that it would just be a cul-de-sac. go all the way through. It's even worse now, that it would just be a cul-de-sac that's an accident waiting to happen, I feel. There's no connection or direct access to a major road. I don't see how this can be safe. This would funnel all of the traffic through residential streets, creating bottlenecks and safety issues for pedestrians, children, and emergency services. The noise, traffic, and density are incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood of single-family homes. It also undermines the character of the neighborhood. This is not infill development. It's high-city, high-density complex being inserted into a single-family residential zone. It alters the suburban nature of where we live. All of this is without saying that, yes, does it block my view? Does it make my neighborhood different? Yes, but it's just not the right spot to put this apartment complex, in my opinion. It disregards the value of current homeowners and everything they've worked for. In conclusion, thank you for letting me have this time. In conclusion, for the proposed 99-unit complex, the article in today, July 8, 2025, the Daily Inner Lake article, there's a report that the project aligns with the city's growth policy, and I just could feel that that's, could not be farther from the truth. I feel like if that's the case, why does this require so many special accommodations? Annexation, a conditional use permit, a zoning change. It appears the city's growth policy only aligns with this project if the goalposts keep getting moved to serve it. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
My name is John Pipolo. I'm at 139 Rimrock Court, and I wish I came as well-prepared as she did. But I can only say that there are 26 houses on that map that border this development, and all these people pay taxes in this community. And as, you know, they kept on saying in that slick ad campaign that he read for this development, that this is the Kalispell growth policy. This is Kalispell. And I don't think any of them appreciate the growth policy. And it says it's being recommended. I'd like to know by who. We live in a democracy, and I just, you know, don't want to get super-political, but it seems tyrannical for four people on the planning commission to make a decision that directly affects hundreds of people's lives, who pay taxes in this community. It's like, I wonder, who do you represent? The interests of the people of Kalispell or carpetbagger developers? Okay. I mean, all the people here, I don't think would have a problem with the R4 zoning continuing and seeing single-family homes going in there, because, you know, obviously there's a landowner there that wants to sell it, you have developers. I think what it is, is the idea of the American dream going down the toilet in Kalispell, Montana, where owning a home was a part of the American dream, and making payments on a house and owning it someday and building equity. These people that live in these apartments that are sprouting up like weeds in Kalispell are going to be in a rent cycle for the rest of their lives. And I feel sorry for them personally. I have a grandson who's renting in one of these apartments in town, and I think he's paying close to $2,000 a month. Once a young person, 20, 25 years old, gets married, it's very, very difficult to come up with a down payment and buy a house when you're paying rent at these prices. I just, I think Kalispell's going, you know, I read in that little thing that this comes down from the state, that this is a new paradigm, was the word they used from Montana. I don't know if anybody ever voted on that. I don't think anyone in this room wants to live in a more urban environment where, you know, the majority of the people are living in apartments. And it doesn't fit in well with our neighborhood at all. My buddy right here lives right behind. I mean, he's going to be able to throw a rock, well, I hope he doesn't, and hit the wall right behind him. He's at, what's your address?
143 Rimrock.
Yeah, 143 Rimrock. And my back windows are going to look at that parking lot, which is going to be very well-lit, I'm sure. So that's what I'll see, is a parking lot and lights looking out the back window. And that's not really the issue, you know? That would be selfish to me if that was it. I think the issue, the points they brought up about traffic, I mean, you guys should jump in your car and drive down Bluestone. There's only one, people are going to go in two directions when they leave that apartment complex. They're going to make a right and go down Denver, and they're going to try to access the highway, and they're going to go down 8th Avenue. You have to stop on 8th Avenue most of the time, because people park on both sides of it, and it's too narrow for two cars to pass each other. And you're going to, I mean, do it. And this is going to increase that exponentially. And if they go in the other direction, they're going to go to Airport Road, and that's very narrow. And you have people parking on both sides, because most people have two or three cars, each family. And there's no sidewalks, and little children are walking to and from school. They're riding their bikes. It's, it just doesn't belong there. It really doesn't. And I don't know what, you know, why it's being pushed, why it's being recommended. So, anyway.
Thank you, sir.
So we all know Bluestone is a disaster for traffic. I live on the other end, on Denver.
Name and address, please, sir.
And there's a speed problem.
Can I get your name and address, please?
My name's Luke, Luke Irwin. I live at 111 Denver Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
Right in front of my house is the speed hump. I'm the guy picking up car parts. I'm not kidding. So for two years now, people that live in the neighborhood haven't quite figured out, you know, I mean, most do. And for the first couple of days, I sat outside with a video camera, watching dozens of cars fly over these things. Hilarious, great. But my kids ride bikes out there, and they want to ride bikes down Bluestone and go to school, so the sidewalk thing has been addressed. We all got that. But how are we going to mitigate the speed of 670, 760 new cars? Right? I mean, that's a lot more traffic, and I don't really like that all that much, so that's all.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Clyde, and I represent DSMT LLC at 1810 North Belmar. Few things I just wanted to bring up is, one, there are no sidewalks, and you're, the whole safety guarantee, you're going to have more ambulances and police cars going to children being hit by vehicles. Not only that, the property at 1810 has sink eight inches since it's been resided in 2016. If you think that by bringing in all this dirt and filling it in is going to be the solution, it's not. I love Kalispell. It's one of the best cities, and I've traveled all over the world, but we are becoming the new Seattle, the new Los Angeles, the new New York. And I hate seeing, crime's increased since 2020. Homicides, rapes, DUIs, thefts. I mean, right now, luckily, this is the area that is not really being affected, but bringing in more apartments and potential for theft. The number-one reason crime happens is social and economic instability. Kalispell's a crisis. It is way too expensive to live here. Medium rent, just over $1,300 a month. I would suggest we need to look at first fixing what we have going on now with our crisis. Lowering the rate of crime, lowering the cost of people trying to make money to live in these places. I mean, how many actual residents of Kalispell are going to be living here versus somebody coming in on vacation from out of state or watching the TV show Yellowstone and saying, "I love it here"? We need to make sure Kalispell comes first and not by adding more fuel to the ongoing fire we already have, which is instability. We have already tons of apartment complexes being built. Lots of them already even done yet, and yet here we are, wanting to throw on more to the ongoing problem. I get that, you know, each city has to have a growth plan. Awesome. But why, whose is a benefit if we're the residents living here, and we have people coming in from Seattle, Denver, that come here on vacation? Oh, we love it. We just got a new condo up there. That they're only going to utilize probably three, four months out of the year, and then the rest of the time, these apartments are going to set empty. It's all about the money. I get it. But let's first reduce the cost it is to live here before we add more to the mix. Thank you.
Can we get your last name, sir? Again, please. Can we get your last name again, please?
143 Rimrock Court, Perry Diorio. So my house is that middle one on Rimrock Court.
Sir, what's your name and address?
Perry Diorio, 143 Rimrock Court. So my backyard faces that. Four units, it's going to be put up with all those parking spots, 176, I believe. And on cadastral, it even says that five acres of this property right here is unbuildable. So you're going to bring, you're going to back trench it, bring in sand, try to build it up so it doesn't sink into Ashley Creek, right? That ain't going to happen. And then you have one way in, one way out off Bluestone. I drive Bluestone every day, and I have to pull over for other people to drive by. So you expect all those people living in those apartments to drive down that road. It's not going to happen. I just painted my house, just put a new roof on my house, new windows, and now you want me to look out those windows at these apartments, and I'm not happy. So I know my neighbors aren't. Have you had an environmental impact? I have pictures of waterfowl, pheasants, deer, all kinds of animals, kids. The one guy down here, he walks his dogs down to the river, and if you guys haven't been out there, it falls off. It's not like you can walk to the creek. It's like 12 feet, and then you go down. So Ricky said it best, but I don't agree with this, and the guy's not even from Montana. That really pisses me off. But I just don't agree with this whole plan. You're putting apartments in where everybody has bought a house. So that's how I feel.
Thank you, sir.
Audible members of the board, my name is Carl Crad. I live at 135 Rimrock Court. Unfortunately, some of my neighbors have taken many of my talking points, so that's just how it goes. But I believe that it should, that I should carry on from what John said, is that the government of Kalispell and all governments are a social contract between the people and those who wish to govern. It has been said by philosophers such as John Locke and Frederick Bastiat, both of whom not only inspired, but were inspired by the Constitution, the Declaration of Independence, and the Bill of Rights, that all men have natural rights to life, liberty, and property, and that it is the government's responsibility and its sole purpose to protect those rights. The Montana Constitution in Article 2, Section 3 protects our rights, including our property rights. The U.S. Bill of Rights, including the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment, guarantee those rights and guarantee that our property cannot be taken away from us unless there is due process of law or we are rightly compensated. Unfortunately, I must state that this proposal not only violates my natural rights, but the natural rights of everyone that lives in that area. How does it violate my rights? Well, it violates my natural right to property. It damages my property. A government is supposed to make laws and make decisions that do not infringe or damage other people's property. But how does it damage my property? Well, as others have said, it will increase noise pollution. It will increase ground and water pollution, whether it is right away or whether it is people just throwing trash off the side and into Ashley Creek, because I guarantee you that will happen. And as others have said, it will destroy the natural beauty along Ashley Creek, because it will drive away wildlife. We've heard of, what, pheasants, eagles, crows, magpies, robins, deer, fox, all of whom live in that area. They raise their children in that area. And I know I might be anthropomorphizing them, but what can you do? But one of the major things, and it's one of the reasons why all of us brought, bought property in that area, is because of that natural beauty. And by putting up those fences, you are now taking away our view of the mountains. One of the reasons why many of us came here. I must remind the board that when a government no longer seems to be interested in protecting our natural rights, that there will inevitably be consequences, whether it is loss of reelection for your, for, for city council members, because they are no longer representing our interests, or it can end up becoming legal challenges. And there are legal challenges that support, well, that support us. Charles River Bridge versus Warren River Bridge, 1837, the right, while the rights of private property owners are sacredly guarded, the community, our community, also have rights, and the happiness and well-being of every citizen depends on their faithful preservation. The Village of Euclid versus Amber Realty, 1926. An ordinance is unconstitutional if it clearly, arbitrarily, and unreasonably has no substantial relation to public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. Lucas versus the South Carolina Coastal Council, 1987. Depriving a property owner of all economic beneficial use of their land constitutes a taking and requires compensation. And finally, Nick versus the Township of Scott in 2019. Property owners can bring a claim in a federal court if property owners are not compensated for losses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Jaclyn Pipolo, 139 Rimrock Court. My house would be off to the side of Building C, the road. And first, I want to thank you for listening, and I hope you have fresh ears with every person that comes up, because a lot of it's repetitive. I also want to thank you, those who look at the people and those that look at their screens. I'm disappointed, because this is important to us. This is where we live. We raise our children and our grandchildren. I also want to point out, I got the letter, is everyone here, and you send it to 150, if you live within 150 feet of the proposed project. A friend and I went out. We went on 8th Street, we went on Sunnyside, and other neighborhoods who do not receive this letter, and that's not fair, because they will be impacted. There is going to be noise. There's going to be traffic. It's going to change this whole area. They will be impacted. But you didn't let them know. They were surprised. They were disappointed. I asked them to please email a letter, and if you can't email a letter, come to the meeting. If you can't come to the meeting, email a letter. I don't know if anyone who's here got our flyers, but I'm asking you to please not let this happen. It's too big. It doesn't fit the neighborhood. Have any of you come to that neighborhood? Have any of you driven down Bluestone? Please answer me. Have any of you, board members, come to where that field is? Have you?
Ma'am.
Mr. Joshua, have you?
Ma'am, ma'am. We're here to take your comment. We don't respond back.
Then I'm, okay, I can ask. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know that. This is my first time.
I know. It's my fault. It's, it's my fault, it's hard for me to go through and get and find all the decorum I have to put out with a, a crowd this size, so.
Okay, I apologize, I didn't know, this is my first time. But if you haven't, and if you have time, please drive to that neighborhood. Number one, things can't be built along Ashley Creek, it's a soft shoulder. And, um, again, like what Ricky said, she has all the, the facts, the numbers, she, I just ask you, please, no. And check it out for yourselves, and you'll see what everyone is saying. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pipolo.
Um, I'm Deidra Thompson, and I live on Denver Avenue. Denver Avenue is the major, major, quote unquote, north-south street, um, that a lot of, of folks who would live here would use to access either the bypass or heading north into Kalispell. Um, and I, at the risk of sounding redundant, um, I made some notes and most of them have been talked about already, but I think redundancy is okay, because you can tell that we feel pretty strongly about this. Um, and it was perfect that you went before me, because I actually wanted to extend an invitation to you. I live on the corner of Denver and, and Bluestone. Um, if you want to come over some afternoon, I've got air conditioning and I've got a big picture window and I've got cold beverages uh, in the refrigerator, and I'd like to welcome you just to watch the traffic. Um, you've heard traffic, traffic, traffic over and over again, because it is such a concern for those of us who have little kids. I'm also a, a public school teacher here in Kalispell, and I really feel strongly, um, that this is not a good place for this development. I don't think that we are an unwelcoming community, I think we want what's best for our families, for our neighbors, and this, development, uh, I, I don't believe i- is in the right place in, in our neighborhood. But honestly, one-twenty Denver, come over, watch the traffic, and, and I think you'll see for yourself. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Can I ask you a question?
No.
Could you give? You didn't give us in, in the community, an opportunity to kind of understand this process a little bit more. Uh, my name's Tony, eighteen twenty-six North Belmar. So I would, uh, there was an opportunity for the S-H-A-M-P, Champ. Thank you. There was an opportunity for, um, board members to ask questions, but not for the community. And I wasn't sure if the developer had a representative here in the room. Um, there are some questions that would be helpful for us to understand as well, what, what the process is. Could you take a minute to tell us? In other words, um, you're not gonna make a decision about this tonight. When will you make a decision? Will there be an additional meeting after this? Where this information is discussed, where you can ask questions or research additional things that have been brought up within the community? Um, if you could take just a couple of minutes and help us understand that process, it'd be appreciated.
Sometimes I go and I get in this and I assume people understand, you know, what, what we're doing up here and everything. So the, the, the process of us asking questions of staff is we have a staff report that's given to us. It's available to everybody online. Uh, it's the same staff report, so what they do is they go through it. And then as the, the body that goes through and makes decisions on this, we ask the questions of them. And as we're asking the questions, you know, it goes through and through the process, through public comment, when you have questions, we take the, we're taking them down. We're taking down notes of what we're hearing. What's gonna happen is when I close public comment, we're gonna get back into, or we're gonna have a motion. We don't have discussion on anything, you can't have discussion on anything, Robert rules of order, unless there's a motion on the table. So through that process, through the de- deliberative process of this board, this commission, we ask questions. If we think it's a question, if it's like, hey, that, that was a good point or whatever, we need to drill down onto that, we then ask the questions. It's about decorum, it's about organization. If I had everybody out there throwing their hand up all the time, wanting to have, you know, a dialogue, this wouldn't work. So, um, I guess, so for right now, I'm putting a little bit of a pause on public comment, doesn't normally happen, putting a little bit of pause on public comment to go through and explain this, you know, there's a lot of other things, you know, through decorum of the chambers to go through and just keep organization and everything, which is, like I had said, you know, the clapping and cheering and stuff. It's distracting to us as well up here. But I want to point something out, because you guys are doing very well for public comment and everything, but I want to point something out. The state legislature last year passed, and this is, I'm up here trying not to get angry about this. They passed three eighty-two last year that removes this process for you to do exactly what you're doing. You would not have found out about this until you went through and saw stuff starting to happen on the property. There's a process that would happen where you go through and you can send comment to the staff. But it takes any operation of what we're doing right now away from you to have your voices heard in front of this board. So I would say further on after this, yes, tonight, we will be making a decision tonight. That's final for this board, this is the commission, that's why I said it early, this is the commission, this is not the city council. That will then roll to the next meeting to the city council, where you can then come back again and see the city council. We're not, I'm on the city council, so I'm the only elected person on this board. So then when it goes city council, that's when you're able to go, and you can contact anybody at any point in time, you can call them, contact them, email them, at any point in time. So, you know, to go through and, and kind of get the full process of this out there, I'm glad you asked. But the thing is, is what you really need to understand is that this process was changed. And I'm, I'm very angry about it. Because when we have this process, we can go through and we can either make something better or we can hear from the community in the neighborhood around what the problems are. That's going away. In the near future, it's going away. So anyhow, I'm gonna go ahead and reopen public comment and, uh, continue on.
My name's Jennifer Bennett, I live on two zero zero nine South Meadows Drive, and I take Bluestone to get to work. There's one of two ways to leave my house to get out of that neighborhood. It's not a big neighborhood, but it takes at least five minutes to drive through it at a Mach speed of fifteen, because there are children on bikes, scooters, walking, moms with strollers. Old, I have an elderly gentleman, his name is Yorgan, and he shuffles his feet along the neighborhood. With the increased amount of traffic, it's just gonna make it harder for these kids to enjoy their neighborhood and to feel safe in the sidewalks in front of their house, where their parents have said, yes, you can go play, because this neighborhood is safe. But then you go and throw hundreds of more residents in and hundreds of more cars with two outlets for our small neighborhood. It's a disaster waiting to happen. And several people have stated really nice facts that are really important, and I'm really upset that we're losing our opportunity to, to discuss this as well in the future. And they're gonna put this where the mountain range is, like, we bought our house and I have a, a little triangle of mountains, and I might lose that, depending on how high those are. And I love sitting in my backyard and listening to the kids scream, happy screams. Not terror. And, you know, it, it's, it's a family neighborhood. People have bought homes to settle and build that community, and it's hard to do that with a huge apartment complex in your backyard.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett.
My name is Melissa Plyley, and I live at nineteen twelve South Meadows Drive. My house, um, is on the corner of, um, South Meadows and Bluestone, so right where that, uh, intersection is, right where they're coming out, is where I live. My husband and I are not happy about it. Um, to everybody's point, um, there are no sidewalks, and we have a lot of kids with, uh, or a lot of neighbors with kids right around us, and we encourage them to walk on our lawn, so they are off the road. Um, and I know you can't answer questions, but this is just my question, how long is this gonna take? We, my husband and I own a construction company, and this is no small project, this is like years. And so you talk about safety, you talk about noise pollution. Years of construction, construction is loud, construction is obnoxious. Um, also, safety, there's one road in and out, dump trucks. Um, equip, uh, uh, equipment is gonna be coming in and out of there. That in itself is safety, I believe, I agree with everything that everybody else has said here, but the construction process is gonna be heinous, it's gonna be horrible. And you think that just having that, that neighborhood sit there, wait till then construction starts moving in, it's gonna be horrible.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Amber Peary, seven eleven Eighth Avenue West. So I'm a little north of this project, and I'm one of the people that received a photocopied flyer from one of the ladies that did the good work of getting the word out about this plan. Um, as someone who lives on Eighth Avenue West, I'm thinking that everyone here has probably driven down that road. It's basically a mini bypass, and there's no other way to get onto the bypass from this development, as far as I understand, other than getting up to, through, um, going across Sunnyside, uh, going over Eighth Avenue West, and then, um, cutting across Seventh Street West and accessing through Meridian. Um, I think when the bypass was made, I think the thinking was that people would go down Fifth. Fifth has, Fifth Avenue West has sidewalks, it's quite lovely, it's a very wide street. No one takes it. Because they love scooting around that corner at the bottom of Eighth Avenue West, it's fast, it's quick, and it's safer, because you don't have to look for traffic coming the other way, the way that you do if you go up Fifth. So if the thinking around the traffic involves Fifth Avenue West at all, I want you guys to understand that no one takes that route. Um, so as someone, again, who lives on Eighth, I'm concerned about the plan for all of these people accessing the bypass. Um, I also want to give a, um, a personal picture, if you will, for the children in the neighborhood, there are quite a few. There's a family that watches a lot of the children of their children. Um, and they are constantly in the road, they play ball, they scream, they laugh, they shout, sometimes they fight. And I love it all. It's, it's the stuff of life, and I enjoy that, and that's been significantly hampered um, just over the last two or three years with all of the traffic, all of the density, all of the growth, and I understand there's nothing we can do about that. But I guess one of the, the reasons I decided to stand up and speak was that sometimes I think cities make a plan and they think people are gonna follow it, and they don't look at the big picture, and then the, um, day-to-day, uh, fallout from the plan is very different, and the life experience of the residents is very different. And that includes the lives of the children. And I have a four-year-old neighbor that just moved in next door to me, this is a wild child. Absolutely ADHD off the charts, I'm a speech therapist, so I know what I'm talking about. And I love this little boy, and he's run into the road multiple times, and multiple neighbors have called about this kid. I've kind of taken him on as a summer project for myself, we're working on freeze when you hear your name called. Um, and he's doing good with that. But he's one kid and I'm one person trying to make a little difference on a small scale on my one block on Eighth Avenue West. And I think I'm a pretty conscientious person, and I'm a, a pretty damn good speech therapist. But I'm not your typical resident, these people are gonna be working, they're gonna be busy, they're gonna be tired at the end of the day. And these kids are going to be all over the place, and I'm concerned about um, the quality life for everyone involved. And again, the traffic that this is ju- gonna generate, the noise pollution, um, the impact on the flora and fauna that everyone's already talked about. Um, but looking at that big picture and looking at the traffic flow, I'd really like you guys to consider what are people gonna do, and how do they actually drive, how are they gonna get on and off the bypass, what's the plan for that? Um, and I also wanted to mention snow removal, I'm wondering what you guys are gonna do for snow removal, because that's a crap show, um, in my area, and I'm thinking that might be an issue there, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Kim Smith, I live at eighteen twenty-seven Bluestone, which is two houses away from the Bluestone-South Meadows intersection, so I did receive the letter. Um, and I just, I think I agree with what everybody here says, um, the traffic's awful. And just like, Deidra, I'd welcome you to come to my house and sit in front of my house, because of the Bluestone traffic, horrendous, especially Saturday, Friday, Saturday nights, the noise, terrible. So I can't, I can't fathom ninety-nine more houses or u- units with two-hundred-plus cars going down that street. Just terrible, the wildlife that lives back there, there's pheasant families, amazing wildlife. We've had many neighbors' pets killed on Bluestone, and we don't even have hundreds of more cars yet. So I hope, um, you'll take into consideration everything that everyone here tonight has said, and X and A on the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Name's Mark Topp, I built one oh seven Denver Avenue about twenty-two years ago. Uh, about two years beyond that, I was living in a house on Bluestone Drive. When was this traffic study done? Can I ask that?
No.
Okay, well, it's probably outdated. Um, six hundred and sixty-seven, I feel like is a little bit short-sighted. Uh, and again, there's gonna be one ingress and egress. Most people live in apartments, they drive Uber, they drive DoorDash, they have roommates, they have friends, they have events that they go to. This is gonna be a thousand cars a day, plus, in and out. And it's either gonna go out to the east, to Airport Road, to go Central Valley, center, uh, center of town, maybe go east. And it's going to go down Denver Avenue, down Seventh Avenue, Sunnyside, Seventh Street. Um, I brought a map, so you can all look for the traffic flow here. Take that, pass it down, that's basically gonna be the corridor. Uh, if any of you have not seen that. So I talked to people on Seventh and Seventh, they're all already overwhelmed. Um, this is just, it's too much, and I know, I know what we're gonna do is we're gonna start with ninety-nine, then we're like, well, what if we do sixty? Now, what if we do forty? So where does that end? And then you update it, and you're like, well, we can do a little bit more here, and we can do this. So updates are always easier to get through than the initial project, that's how it works. The proposal is super optimistic how it fits into the neighborhood and, and rah rah rah, that's, that's not true. At all, not, nothing in the presentation hit home with me at all. If any of you are familiar with Dale Pierce, he passed a couple of years ago. He lived on the corner of Ashley Drive. And Dale Pierce plowed all of that field for years and years. And every year, he got his tractor stuck in the spring. We had water issues, I, I believe you talked about the water issues before. It was a massive issue with that, they ended up doing a French drain down Phoenix Avenue, I think, or Phoenix Street. Kind of solved it a little bit, there's still a lot of water issues, it's a swamp. It just, it just is, none of those, none of those houses should have ever been approved to have basements or even crawl spaces, it's all should have been above-grade slabs. I think anyone that's been in the neighborhood for over twelve, fifteen years knows what kind of battles we've had with flooding, damage, uh, I know Luke next door be- before he bought his house, it had flooded. There's been flooding issues all over there, uh, sloughing off into the creek, all kinds of stuff. Um, as mentioned, safety issues, it's a narrow, single ingress, egress. I can't even believe it's being considered with that. That is mind-blowing for me. Uh, it just doesn't make any sense. So that's what, twenty-six feet wide, I think, is what the traffic study said. People park on the edge of the road, they have very small front yards, there's no room to ever expand that. You're gonna be right at people's doorstep if you do that. It's just not gonna happen. Um, what happens when, you know, kids are running in and out, that's a huge safety concern already, as mentioned. I know you guys are probably tired of hearing a lot of this, but there's a, there's a corner, if you head east, there's a corner on Bluestone Drive as you come around and it faces south. If you're driving in the morning in the fall, you have the sunlight hitting you right in the face, and your windows are frosty, and I have to stick my head out my window, even if it's a little bit foggy, you still have to stick your head out your window to even see, and make sure you're not gonna run someone over in that twenty-six-foot-wide corner. It's impossible, there, there's no room for even five hundred more trips a day. It's completely insane. There's the, the, the big park, the baseball fields is always two miles an hour, weaving in and out of there when there's a game. There's the kid park and the dog park right there, there's kids and there's people there all the time, there are gonna be a huge hazard to hit. Um, the ingress and egress, like I said, on Seventh Avenue, if you've all looked at that, that's, those people are just beyond frustrated, and I feel bad for them, I travel through there, too. I try to keep a reasonable speed. But adding, I would guess the majority of the traffic's gonna go that way, to go to Hutton Ranch, to go to wherever, Whitefish, whatever, there's gonna be minimum five hundred trips a day through that corridor. And those people are already overwhelmed. Uh, I also live next to the speed humps. Um, I believe last year, s- when they first put them in, someone came hammering through there in the middle of the night and took out my five-inch tree, the only one I had left on that corner, I had two more that got taken out in years pri- prior. So someone was going way too fast, hit that speed bump, and almost went into my property, but it took out the only tree that I had left on my property that was put into the boulevard. So still kind of upset about that. As someone else mentioned, construction, this is a huge concern of mine, so I wrote this, and this needs to be really taken into account. Again, Again, one little ingress and egress, 26 feet. There's a sidewalk a little bit previous to that, but a lot of those construction companies are going to be coming in from Airport Road and they're going to be coming in from Sunnyside and Denver. You know, if they get off the bypass, that's probably going to be the route they take. So there's one access point off of Bluestone Drive. How many pieces of heavy equipment will have to be hauled in and out? How many dump trucks, semis will be making multiple trips daily, in and out for dirt, gravel, landscape materials, et cetera, et cetera? There's all the compaction stuff where they have to get new soil that's been treated and mixed. I don't want to understand the ins and outs of that, maybe the construction person does. How many concrete trucks will be in and out when they start pouring? How many building supply deliveries off of large flatbed trucks and semis will there be daily, weekly? How many loads of pavement will be trucked in for the parking lot? How many contractors and employees will be in and out every single day of the week for work and to go to and from lunch? I've worked construction before, not everybody brings their lunch. They go to the gas station, they go wherever, speed in and out and get their lunch. So the list goes on and on. The roads are not going to survive this and I feel like it's a huge, huge safety issue. I mean, what happens when one of the dump trucks rounds onto the South Meadows extension there and runs into someone's yard and hits a kid? It only takes a second. Everyone here's been affected by traffic accidents at some point in time. We're throwing a whole bunch more vehicles into the mix just with the living situation. You start talking about the construction stuff and the necessity for them to get in and out fast and efficiently. And they're heavy, overloaded probably. Yeah, it's not a great place to put it. I get that there's a housing shortage and we've got to build, build, build. I think everyone in this room probably has apartment fatigue. It's too much, but this is a really bad spot for it. It's different if it's off Airport Road or off Three Mile Drive or Two Mile Drive or Four Mile Drive. This is not the place to put it. Even if you were to extend that and put a bridge over Ashley Creek, which is obviously a huge undertaking, it's still too much for that spot. It does not fit in, it does not belong. There's going to be a massive amount of problems with it. And nobody that I know that lives anywhere near this is going to be happy. It's going to be incredibly frustrating for everybody. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Topp. So I was going to go, I'm going to go through and say, because I've heard it a couple of times now as we get further along in the public comment, other things start to go through and be repeated and everything. But don't worry about that. This is your time to have your public comments, so you're not... What did Mr. Topp say? He said, I can't remember. But don't worry about what you're having to say, just say it because this is your time and we are listening, so...
My name's Jessica Chance, I'm at 1934 Bluestone. I think the ad campaign that we heard earlier, if I might, I kind of think that in and of itself explains everything. So it's a, I may be misquoting this slightly, multifamily dwelling in a single-family dwelling community. Oxy-moron, that in and of itself should tell you everything you need to know, that that doesn't fit anywhere. Aside from that, we have a bunch of housing going up, none of it's full. We have plenty of availability, so not sure I quite understand why we need to put 99 units in. If you've never been to Bluestone, I invite you to go and take up all of these wonderful people's beverages and enjoy yourself. I cannot mow my lawn and have my car in the driveway. And I can't park my car on the street because then it becomes a half-lane road, not a one-lane, a half-lane. If you're driving down Bluestone and your house is here and there's a house here, people are parked on this side of the road, people are parked on this side of the road, you're not getting out of your driveway barely, nor are two cars going to go by. Where are all these construction trucks going to go? There's only one way in and one way out. That, to me, that is actually the one thing that brought me here. That's insanity. I can't even fit my head around it. And the fact that we're sitting here listening to everybody tell us that it fits within this plan, but we have to make a gazillion accommodations to fit this square peg into some round hole is telling me that it doesn't fit anybody's plan except the developer. I'm just saying, I just, it's awful. The whole thing is terrible. None of that belongs there. Having 200 units, minimally 200 cars minimum? I have dogs, I can't even walk my dogs without almost being hit. And even if I take them one at a time, there's cars trying to swerve around me, people stopping, God bless them so that I can walk and then they go around me. It's terrible. It's an absolute horrible plan. There's so much open space. I don't understand why we're trying to slap it into this tiny little area again. One in, one out. It's awful. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Patrick Hawkins, 1731 Bluestone Drive. I have lived in my current home for 22 years. I've watched all the other homes in that development come up. I'm a member of the Stratford Valley Homeowners Association and I've watched that entire thing. I'm one of those that has a basement that should not have had a basement. And I am, and I've watched the changes in traffic patterns throughout that. So my establishment there predates the bypass and so watched the changes that occurred through that neighborhood as traffic increased, as traffic changed, as the patterns have changed throughout that time. I think the fact that there's one exit on a southbound 93 bypass, that's a state deal, I know, but the lunacy of that in and of itself tells me a little bit something because I was worried at the time that they would have an entire turnaround at that or exit there. As has been mentioned, 99 units shoved into the middle of nowhere. Everything egresses and ingresses all have to go through residential neighborhoods. Most of the other apartment complexes around the city go on to more major units or they go through business developments and they go through things like that. This is all residential. You're going to go either eastbound and go out on a curvy road that goes past a park and a ball field to Beg Park and out onto Airport Road, which is, we've already watched also an increase in traffic patterns on Airport Road. Bluestone Drive, as has been mentioned, that area of Bluestone Drive has no sidewalks. It has very limited visibility. It's a high-risk traffic pattern through there, morning and evenings. And I've driven that. I think the fact that there are speed humps on a city street, Denver, tells you a great deal about what kinds of traffic patterns and the ability of law enforcement to mitigate the risks to the neighborhood that we had to put speed bumps on a city street. I'm not opposed to parking two apartment complexes, I've lived in them. I have always thought for a long time, I've lived in the valley for 30 years, that there was a need for affordable housing. We've watched the apartment complexes boom in this county and we've now gotten to a place where there's a dearth of them and some of them are in a process of not being completed and things like that because we already have too many. The one thing, if we were looking at a real housing crisis in this valley, we are currently not. Things have stabilized in their community and we're trying to shove something into a place that it has no business going. And so, yes, high-risk, no sidewalks. Bluestone is a mess. The road is already a mess. And as we add more traffic, as we add construction traffic and stuff through that, through that neighborhood, it's only going to make that road worse. I'm also living in a subdivision from an out-of-state developer that did a terrible job on the roads, that all, the entire infrastructure within that neighborhood is terrible. The roads that he built, and he left town. And he left town and he was let off the hook and there's still, and so there's nothing we can do from our association standpoint to be able to have any recourse back to him. And so these kinds of things raise my suspicions and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
My name is Matthew Nelson, I live at 107 Denver Avenue. I came to Kalispell in 1984 as a kid, came from Shelby, moved here. And then they built this development, I think in 2000, 2001? I don't remember exactly when. But it was billed as an inexpensive, small yards, but affordable for people lived in Kalispell where the wages obviously were never very good. Now they're a little bit different, but 80s and 90s Kalispell, if you didn't work at the loon plant, didn't work at Plumcrick, or you weren't a professional doctor, attorney, or dentist, you couldn't purchase a single-family home. So that's what it was billed as. I think it's unfair to pull the rug out from some people 20 years later when that's probably their only asset. So they've been working for $12 an hour their whole life, they buy a home and then they're going to retire with that money. But now the home has apartments behind it. So I think that's something to consider. It hasn't been mentioned today, but it's an impact on people who traditionally, when they purchased homes originally, were not high-income people. So something to consider. The other consideration when we were listening to the presentation, which I understand is part of the process, the clubhouse isn't for the neighbors. The clubhouse is for the apartment dwellers, right? It's not, they're not going to invite the kids in to swim at the pool or to use the shuffleboard or whatever the stuff is. It's just, I understand that's the process, they're selling the project and that's part of the deal. My dad owned apartments in Shelby, had a grocery store and a bar. I understand business, I understand how that works. But I think this is unfair. People bought those based on, not a promise, but based on an expectation. I'm going to do some research on the infill stuff. I think you said that Gianforte is in support of the infill with high density. I don't know if that's true, but I'm going to be on the lake in two weeks with somebody who works with Mr. Gianforte, so I'm going to ask that question. And I do some research also. I may be misunderstanding, but I'm...
I'll get into it again. I'll get into it again.
Okay. Not the open meeting stuff, but the...
Yeah, no, the 382.
Okay, I'm curious because I didn't know about that until this meeting, so I'm curious about that. But the main thing is, you have people that bought those homes, low income, to have an experience that most people should have, which is a single-family home, and now they're changing the deal at the end of it. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Hi, my name is Annie Camfield, I live at 131 Rimrock Court. Took some notes so I could be concise. I feel like a lot of people have addressed certain things that I had, so I'll just list them. But traffic and wildlife, soil stabilization and stormwater management, that's something that we struggle at our house trying to navigate. But more than that, I recognize that the recent build that passed requires new land use planning that considers higher-density housing. And just to give context, this is an open land area in the community that has a positive impact on everyone that's there. I see people of every age there. And I think, I understand that growth is a difficult thing to navigate. And so I just think that I wanted to put in a request for exploration of other strategies because there are multiple strategies to increase density in an area. And this one just feels like it's such high contrast to what the community is right now. If there could be better ways to integrate that so it could complement the community and the land that is already there and keep that public access and make it a place where both the new people and the people that currently live there can enjoy that and it can be beneficial for both. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Sue Pruitt and I live at 1910 Bluestone Drive. And I've been a resident there for 15 years. And I don't leave in the winter, I'm there all year. I do vacation, but I'm usually in my yard every evening in the summer watering. And I don't know if there's, I've never seen a car drive down Bluestone at 15. They're usually going 30 or more and there are speeders down there. There's not one stop sign on that whole stretch. And I fear that sometime, something's going to happen and a kid's going to get killed or someone's deer pet. And I've tried calling the county because I had understood when I moved in it was county territory and we were not in the city. And they said that to do a speed bump or anything down Bluestone, it would require a road test, a traffic test for number of cars going down there. And with 99 units, that's what, 176 parking spaces? It's going to be horrible. I'm outside in my yard in the evening until after 10 in the summer and everybody speeds down there. It's like a freeway. And I've talked to my neighbors, they say the same thing. You know, it's going to take the death of a child before anything is ever done. And that's my biggest worry, is the speeding and the traffic. Nobody slows down because there's not a stop sign on that road. No speed bump. There are stop signs on the roads that cross on those streets, but not down Bluestone. It's very upsetting. And I want you to take that into consideration before something dreadfully happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pruitt.
Susan Kratt, 135 Rimrock. So I believe that everybody has said this before, but I just want to reiterate the fact that if there's 99 units, you're talking possibly 300 more people in that small area. Maybe 200 cars going down that. Plus, one other thing that I wanted to mention is every one of those single-family homes all around that area are going to be losing value in their homes because of this apartment complex that will be going in there. So the devaluation of those homes is something that I think you should consider. Thank you.
My name is Abby Elkins, I live at 202 Phoenix Street. And the gal that spoke just before you, little self-incriminating here, but I was almost one of those people that killed a kid on accident. It was horrible. I was driving down Bluestone and I was crossing meadows and you know how the traffic situation on Bluestone is terrible? So we've got car parked here, car parked here. I'm doing an honest 20 mile an hour on my way home from work and somebody's kids just riding their bike, doing their thing, doing what kids do, blows across Bluestone over to that meadow and I'm not kidding you, I locked up my brakes and I was way too close for comfort and that would have been my fault and I would have had to live with that. And nobody's doing anything wrong, I'm going home, he's coming, doing his thing in the meadow. It is such a scary situation on that road already. And I'm going to, I wrote this and a lot of this has already been covered by you guys, but I'm going to read it anyway because that's what I'm going to do, I guess. But I feel like maybe my husband and I bring a fresh perspective because we've only lived in the neighborhood for a year and a half and there's a lot of longtime owners. And in the year and a half that we've lived there, we've thoroughly enjoyed our time there. We bought there for a reason because it is a great place for us to start and stuff like that and it is quiet. But even in the year and a half that we've been there, I can see the validity and all of the concerns that have been brought up tonight. Yeah, and I stand with all you guys that have spoken, so I'm just going to read this. Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Abby Elkins and I live on Phoenix Street, just a few blocks from the proposed development site. I'm here with my husband, Dylan Elkins, who serves as the active-duty Air Force recruiter for all of Western Montana currently. We're stationed here on military orders and this is our first home we've ever owned. So we chose this neighborhood because it felt peaceful, established and liked the kind of place we could truly settle in while serving our community and country. I want to respectfully raise some serious concerns about the proposed plan to build 100 apartment units in the open field behind several homes in our neighborhood. While I understand the need for housing, I believe this location is not well-suited for such a high-density development primarily due to the condition and limitations of the existing infrastructure. Many of the main streets in our neighborhood lack sidewalks entirely and several intersections don't even have basic signage like stop signs, yield signs. They aren't minor oversights. I mean, just my one experience of almost hitting somebody's kid was enough for me to be freaked out about where I live. And like I said, nobody's doing anything wrong, we're all just living our lives, so it's not even safe for that. The real safety concerns, especially in the community with children, family, and frequent foot traffic. Well, I'm going to not even read that part because I had written in there to be polite, while congestion isn't a major issue yet, because I have lived in bigger cities, being military and stuff, I was trying to be light on that, but it really is a problem. It's important to note that our neighborhood has no direct access to the highway bypass. Adding over 150 additional vehicles could easily create bottlenecks on the roads that are already poorly maintained and inconsistently marked. The most common route is the Foyes Lake exit, at least that's what my husband and I have found, where we go through the number streets, we call them, right? Through the numbered streets of West Kalispell, which are already inundated with stop sign intersections. Just last year, I personally witnessed a serious accident at one of those intersections where a car was hit hard enough to flip on its side. I think it was Eleventh and Fifth, right around there somewhere. Um, and I don't know, I don't know who was at fault, I saw the aftermath, but I was like, this is crazy. This is like a, a neighborhood, and we're dealing with a major accident. Um, I can't even fathom what that would look like with heavy equipment, um, more traffic of construction workers, all that kinda stuff coming through there. These roads were never intended to function, uh, as, as high-volume thoroughfares, with major improvements to road design signage and traffic flow. Uh, the addition of large apartment complexes could, could result in frustrating and potentially dangerous conditions for everyone who lives here. There are also questions about how the development fits in with the character of our neighborhood. This area was clearly designed with low-density, single-family living in mind. Replacing open land with multi-story apartment units is not only disruptive to the views and the quiet atmosphere many of us moved here for, or originally bought here for, um, but it also threatens to alter the overall feeling of the community. Um, and of course, there are concerns about property value. I mean, not, not to over, oversight the, um, value of safety and stuff, but like somebody else had said, um, a lot of people who buy here, like, this is their asset, it's hard to buy a home. My husband and I were very blessed to be able to move here and buy a home when we got here.
Ms. Elkins, can you, can you address the board?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I just got so passionate about these people I listen to all night. Um, like everybody else said, um, like, safety is first, but also, you know, when you, when you put so much time and effort into attaining an asset like that, seeing it devalued by something like that is really disheartening. Large, high-density pros, projects can induce more noise, traffic, light pollution, and when placed directly next to single-family homes, they can have measurable impact on surrounding home values. As homeowners, this obviously matters deeply. I'm not against development, but I do believe that we need, um, to plan growth responsibly in ways that support people who've already, who already live here, as well as those who may move in. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Elkins.
Good evening, Toby McIntosh, twenty-two fifty U.S. Highway, Highway ninety-three South. Uh, I'm here with Jacola Engineering and Architecture. I just, I think at this point, just wanna mention, I'm here to answer any questions, uh, that staff or, um, the planning board may have. I wanted to point out that I think a lot of the concerns this evening are captured in the conditions for the conditional use permit that allow city staff and the departments that regulate the rules that the city has adopted to allow for review of the project as the permits are being submitted for the, the actual design. So, this conditional use permit and annexation, initial zoning are part of the process, as we all know. And, um, again, thanks for your time, and here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Only one.
Really?
Yeah, cuz then everybody else will wanna start getting up, and we'll go through the whole thing again, so I mentioned that before, so.
Hi, my name is Nicole Fusaro Marshall. Um, I live at nineteen-twenty-three, um, Bluestone Drive. Um, I've lived there for fifteen years at least, but I've lived in Kalispell my entire life, basically. So, um, I was born here. Um, to me, it, we can always say, or how many things can happen in a specific place, but when you actually are in that place, and when you live there, it's completely different. I mean, I know times when we have tried to pull out of our road, but we, our driveway, but we can't see, so my mom has to get out, look both ways, make sure no one's coming, go. We have the park for the kids, we have a school just down the road, and we also have that baseball field, which there's not enough parking for everyone, so they park on both sides of the road. They park all around, and there's kids running back and forth, there's families, and then that school on, off Airport Road. I also know that there's been other apartments that have been built off of Airport Road. We have, uh, three different apartment areas there. And one of them was a newer one. Um, there's only two, but there was plenty of space. I do believe that they tried to build more, but I don't know what happened, because I think that was the plan, but they just stopped. And it's just hard to see something that's changing, but not only that, just something that's changing in a way that it can affect so many people in the negative. Yeah, I mean, everyone's stated different facts, but i- it's just, it's not, it's not easy to imagine that many more people that are going to be driving and going to be in the area, but just affecting that road. I- it is hard to imagine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fusaro. Anybody else that hasn't already commented?
Hello, thank y'all for being here, hearing us. Austin Grochewski, one-twenty Rimrock Court. You don't need me to spell it. Just like it sounds. Anyway, uh, I wanna say, I wanted to come up here and tell you that I oppose this. I wasn't able to let you know through clapping, I understand, so I wanna just make it clear that I'm here, sitting here, to oppose this. Uh, for many of the reasons y'all have cited, safety being a big one. The one thing I haven't heard, John, I think you touched on it, kind of, is about, uh, ownership. And I'm excited, you know, to finally be a homeowner and everything like that, and living in this area, everyone takes pride in their properties. And you're gonna now make us outnumbered by people that are transient in nature, and don't bring any ownership to this place. As a former, uh, apartment complex engineer, you know, the maintenance guy, I see how bad it gets, especially Thanksgiving. You're gonna have tons of turkeys in the creek, but, I mean, let alone all the trash, the noise pollution, all that stuff. I'm telling you from firsthand experiences, a maintenance guy at multiple different apartment complexes, the, the feel is not there. I'm trying to get back to the whole ownership of single-family residences, people care about each other in the community. We're gonna get outnumbered by people who don't care, and I'll let you guys go from there in your minds. Thank you so much.
Sir, that was probably better than clapping.
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Maximilian Fusaro, and my wife just came before. I moved here eight months ago. It's a beautiful place, maybe people here don't welcome me, but it's a beautiful and a beautiful place. I am coming from Europe, and I decided to come here because of my wife, she didn't wanna move, understand her, because it's a beautiful feel back there. And so we started to build, uh, to remolding, remodeling everything. We just got to finish almost with the countertop of the kitchen, and we got that letter in the mail. Anyway, it was kinda rough, hard, but, um, all the, the people said before, I agree with. And, uh, I had questions about the construction, because I, I hope they're not gonna build, but I think they're gonna build it no matter what, but I have questions about how tall the, the, how many feet tall the building will be, how long the construction will be, it's about one year, two years, five years, I don't know. And, uh, so those are the main questions, how tall, because I, I'm live like basically in a basement of nineteen-twenty-three Bluestone Drive. So, uh, I think like I'll have now almost no light, uh, into my living room and kitchen and, and, and office. And that's okay, but I prefer a right or not, honestly. And, uh, yeah, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, I'm gonna close public comment on this agenda item. Gonna look to the commission for a motion on annexation, uh, file KA twenty-five dash zero five.
I'll move that the Kalispell City Planning Commission adopts staff report number KA twenty-five dash oh five. His findings affect and recommend to this Kalispell City Council that the property be annexed, and the zoning for the property be city RA one residential apartment.
Okay, motion seconded. Um, there's a lot to unpack here. I guess first of all, I mean, I know there's questions of staff after hearing public comments, so if you wanna jump into that first.
I'm curious, is the builder here? Is the builder here? Cool, we'll start off with that. My mic's on. I can speak super loud if you want me to. Is that better? Is the builder here? Cool, we'll start with that. Go.
Okay. Any questions of staff? For what, you know, questions were arriving around? I, I have some, but, uh.
Can you delve into the whole, um, height of the buildings? What would be allowed, what would be permitted under this zoning versus what they're actually proposing?
They're proposing thirty-three feet in height for the, and by, I mean, in Kalispell, you know, it goes up to forty-five feet.
Right.
So it's considerable amount that they're reducing, uh, for this project, uh, to allow visual and aesthetic, uh, angles.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions regarding the, um, the road connection. Specifically, um, it was mentioned that, uh, Bluestone does not have curb and gutter, does not have sidewalks. Does the city of Kalispell claim that road as theirs at this point?
Yeah, that's a city street.
Is, are there any plans for improvement of that road to improve pedestrian circulation?
Pedestrian circulation, no, there's no, uh, plan for sidewalks. That development was, um, built in nineteen-seventy-eight. And at that time, the city standards didn't require a lot of these issues, or a lot of these features. I think when I started here in two thousand and twelve, um, a couple of years after that, maybe twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, the city of Kalispell built a significant amount of storm sewer in this subdivision, because the original development didn't have storm sewer, there's just roadside ditches. And, you know, I'm talking hundreds of thousands, maybe millions of dollars in two phases of construction. So there's, there's a, a definite difference in standards. If you drive through this area, Belmar is a newer subdivision, and it has sidewalks, and a lot of what you would see in a, um, development that you would see built today with, um, streetlights and, and such. But, um, older portions of this subdivision didn't have a lot of those features that weren't required at the time.
So I, just let's go over the, the, if we're gonna go on that a little bit, let's, let's discuss this concept of the speed uh, slash, uh, traffic studies. Can you inform everyone here, including myself, the date and time that those studies occurred?
Yep, the TIS, the Traffic Impact Study, was completed in May of two thousand and twenty-five. The counts were at, I think, six different intersections, um, and those were on the fourteenth and fifteenth of May of this year.
And, and what were those counts?
Uh, well, they're, they're over multiple days, so I, I don't have the totals for each of those. But the, the process is, the TIS requires that if there's a level of service drop, um, that those levels of service drops be mitigated. I guess one step back, if, uh, development comes into the city, one of the first things that we do is review the development to see if there's over three hundred vehicle trips in a day. If so, that requires a traffic impact study to be completed. The traffic impact study then looks at the existing traffic as it exists today, and then over the life of the project, grows that with background traffic, just assuming that traffic is going to grow whether or not the development occurs. At the end of that design period, then they compare the traffic without any development proposed versus the project with the development proposed, and they apply a distribution, um, based off of the um, Institute for Traffic Engineers Trip Generation Manual, based on the type of development. So they look at a national study to determine how many trips per day, per unit would be produced, and then the distribution that's occurring currently, as that applies and, and goes out. And, and then they, uh, determine if there's delay that occurs at the intersections based on this increase in traffic. And if there is delay that occurs, then those, um, delays are supposed to be mitigated. The TIS performed for this by, um, Ablyn Traffic Services, who's a, a professional traffic operations engineer, and does a lot of the, um, studies for new development in the city of Kalispell, uh, found that there would be a traffic control required at the intersection of South Meadows Drive and Bluestone. And that's something that we still have to, to review. Um, you know, there, at this point, we don't have final design for anything. Um, it's all conceptual, and we review that conceptual design to determine whether or not the project, um, could potentially be built. And, and so, um, that traffic control device, uh, which would likely be stop signs at that intersection, has not been reviewed yet.
If I'm not mistaken, I, I, the way I read it was that the Airport Road and the, basically the, uh, intersection where the baseball field is, uh, was generally not studied at peak time that most of the community is complaining about. Uh, can you make a comment about how they should expect that process? Cuz I would imagine that, uh, a baseball field is different than normal traffic, a- as I can see that it's six hundred and sixty-seven, uh, trips per day for this one physical location, but it doesn't necessarily take in an event like a baseball field.
Yeah, so I, I guess I don't know whether or not there was a baseball event at the field that particular day.
Baseball does not happen at that time.
Yeah. Um, so likely, an event like that wouldn't have been, unless it was captured, it wouldn't have been included in the existing counts.
Okay. I just wanna make sure everybody knows that that is valid in regards to some observation.
Hey PJ, um, it was mentioned about the notification process at state law at a hundred and fifty feet.
A hundred and fifty feet is what the standard is, right?
Right.
A hundred and fifty feet.
So, state law tells us we, we have to notify at a hundred and fifty feet, no more.
That's the individual own, individual notices that go out. You know, it's in the paper, um, that's required as well, um, but, um, but that's the standard, right?
Okay. Uh, services, uh, the services had come up, I think, probably, maybe there might've been a, maybe a disconnect between the difference of services nearby and services in place. Uh, so, um, services are nearby, probably, uh, definitely in Bluestone, but I don't know if they go up South Meadows and Dead End?
Yep, there, um, water and sewer mains, sick, or there's an eight-inch sewer main and an eight-inch water main, both in South Meadows that, um, end right where their project would start.
So that's the difference between, you know, they're nearby or in place, you know, I just wanted to make it up, that came up in some of public comment that, uh, that this, the su- su- uh, services are, are nearby there at the end of, uh, South Meadows.
Means will be required to be extended.
Right. Onto the property. How about on Bluestone? What's the width of that?
I don't know that right offhand. I, it's, it's probably twenty-four feet, would be a pretty standard two-lane rural road.
Sixty-foot roadway.
Yeah, the, the right-of-way would be sixty, I believe.
So, having driven that road a lot, it does feel very narrow, but more so than that, really, it, it seems the road surface is really crappy. So, I, I don't, I don't know, you know. So I, I don't, I don't know, you know, I go through and I think about this as far as, you know, what the, what the necessity for um, you know, doing a development like this of, of this scale with all the heavy equipment, heavy trucks and stuff going down our road. It just seems like in, so nineteen seventy-eight, when that road was put together, um, I just wonder if it has the capabilities to handle that with the base. So sir, I'm, I'm in cons, I'm in conversation with staff. I guess that's an obse- observation that I would have. It's a worry that I would have. Um, basically the, the condition of the road.
Right.
To be able to handle that.
Yeah, um.
Other concerns too, but.
You know, there's, through our uh right-of-way permit process, we can control uh hall routes. Um, and, and so that would be something that we could look at with this project potentially, but um, overall, the way that we uh, we prioritize projects through the city is every year, um, our street fleet um superintendent goes through and rates all of the roads and as the rating of a road decreases, um, that hires the ranking for when we need to move forward with maintenance. And so we prioritize based off of conditions as they occur.
On a side note, I would think Bloom, uh, Bluestone's probably there. For, that's a side note though.
Yeah, I, I think you can actually get online and look at the street ratings right now.
One other thing to add on to that is that um, it's important to note that when a development comes in, they're responsible to mitigate their impact. It's not necessarily.
Well, and that's not where I'm, that's not what I'm getting at.
I understand, but just in terms of the overall conditions, um, they're responsible for mitigating what their impact is. So for example, under the TIS, that's why our standard is to maintain or improve the level of intersection, uh, level of service at an intersection. Um, it isn't to resolve existing situations. That's not to say that the existing situation doesn't come into play, but um just to clarify that that's what the situation is.
Definitely, and that's not where I was going with that is, I'm, I'm looking at the overall, you know, what's the overall impact gonna go through and be not, not, not necessarily that they'd have to go through and redo um, Bluestone, but um I know there's a lot of off-street parking that goes through there. Um, on both sides, a lot of off-street parking, which really narrows it down. Um, any, any other questions? Any comments you want to discuss?
Um, I just was looking at the numbers. Uh, as I understand it, the width of the road is twenty-six feet?
For, for a local street that, their, their frontage.
Bluestone.
Bluestone, um, it was built to a different standard than we have today. It'd be a rural road section, two-lane road, so I would expect two twelve-foot lanes, four, twenty-four foot probably.
Cool. As I oddly enough know the number, uh, generally the biggest area was twenty-six. I just want to make sure that that is known. The other part is uh that when we have two vehicles that are parked next to each other, um, with the width of a dump truck, besides the issues with the weight of the dump truck, how much width will there be for another car to pass by?
Yeah. Yeah, if, if you had cars parked, um, typically we look at a car width being between eight and nine for parking space. So you, you take um, you know, sixteen to eighteen feet out of that road width, if you had two cars parked on that rural road.
I think a lot of times, like, so you guys know, we do not get paid, right? I do this as a public service for you guys and the city. I, we defend the city often uh because of in, in theory, logical processes and on the other side of the fence, illogical processes. I'm just trying to be very logical about this because I think this is the most uh structural thing and perfect timing. Uh, to use adjectives and nouns to promote a building site, I, in my brain, it doesn't vary, and it doesn't work very well. So this is the fun uh scenario where we just try to do the logical thing. So if we don't know if a car can bypass a dump truck where there's two cars passed, I think that would be the first step to take personally. And I just want to make sure everyone sees that. And that was like the first thing, like, yeah, I understand that this is going from R four to an R one from county to city. And those things are technically quite equal in regards to the maximums. Uh, I would also maybe like to ask the question, what is the transition? And I want you guys to say it, so I don't have to say it, to the transition between two exit points and one exit point for a building site. What is the number?
Number's at a hundred, so fire code allows with apartments up to, up to this level with a single access.
So they're doing the maximum for one street, and then we have an opportunity for another street to probably even consider this as a secondary problem. And this is, I think this is just something to be observed. And if the builder isn't here to talk about it, that, that, it is what it is.
I'd wave my hand if I could.
Oh. Shelby.
Um, I want to say this as respectfully as possible, but with uh the immediate fact that this is giving me PTSD from the Tronstad development we had to deal with last year. So um, why do we have to put in possibly apartment buildings right there? How does that blend in with that neighborhood? I've, I've grown up with friends in that neighborhood for fifteen, twenty years. I myself was hit when I was sixteen on a bike on Bluestone. And uh, then they just kept going, which I don't blame them. I'm gonna stop either. I stood right back up, but that's, that's beside the point. Um, and also, uh, there's, you know, the incident in two thousand twelve when that plane went into that building on Ruddy Duck, that was a house. I was in a house on Teal, which was just right next to that. So I'm just kind of concerned, you know, it hit a tree, what if it hits a building, a, a giant apartment building per, per se. I'm just concerned, could we put a house in there instead? Does it have to be those large buildings with that many? That just doesn't make sense. That doesn't look like it fits into me. That's like a, like, an eyesore almost. That just doesn't make sense to me. I apologize. If that sounds rude, I'm just trying to be honestly blunt.
Okay, so I'm gonna jump in if. Shelby, were you done?
Yep, I'm done.
All right. All right. No, it's, I was, one of the things I have written down that I wanted to maybe point out was is that um, th- this isn't a we process. This isn't the city of Kalispell going through and saying, hey, let's put an apartment complex in here. This would be really good. Th- th- this is literally, you know, you know, some of the comment that we had gone through and heard about private property also applies to private property owners on the other side of the, 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 the coin in this issue, where they have a process that they can attach themselves to, to go through a certain process. We are facilitating the process. Staff is facilitating the process when the developer or the applicant comes in to staff and they say, this is what we'd like to do. I think there's probably times where they're like, ah, yeah, I know there, you're, you're out of line on some of the other ones. I really don't know. I'm, whether, whether an applicant comes in really heavy-handed and they're like, well, this wouldn't fit, or it, it, for whatever reasons, you can't pull it forward. If it's gotten to us here, then it's met the standards that it can meet to clear that hurdle. Now it's at this hurdle. So it's gotta clear this hurdle to get to the city. Well, it can still go to the city council, but the, the, the point that I'm making is, is that this isn't something the city's going through and conjuring up and saying, let's, let's go and do this project. This is literally a private property owner who owns a property, whether you like it or not, pushing his property forward. So we get the added benefit of going through and looking at this and placing things on the scale and seeing, how does this fit? How does it not fit? Um, so for us up here, there's, there's no, you know, I'm more for, I'm more against, we're literally taking all this information in. So I was gonna get into that earlier, but um.
And let me rephrase my question in the sense uh to the, to the builder or the project. Can you not build apartments and just put in a couple houses, maybe a townhouse? That just seems more feasible to the area. And that would make more sense um as someone who is, you know, just became a homeowner, to be honest. I, I have been renting for a long time. Don't like it. Um, and I'm glad that I am a homeowner. I just think that townhouses would be maybe a little better instead of ninety-nine units.
Well, I mean, Shelby, I mean, it's a, it's a perfectly, yeah, you can ask them that question. I mean, I'm sure they have things, I'm sure they have on their side reasoning for going through and pushing forward what they're wanting to do and, and, and getting that through staff and getting it to us. I mean, it's a perfectly fine question to ask. Um, but this is what we have in front of us, so.
Maybe, maybe the, the applicant's uh engineer would have something to say about that whole process. I believe he's still here.
Yes. And I, I can add into that too, I think. And, you know, Toby corrected him wrong, but you know, they considered single-family going into this location as well. And there was a couple of things that kind of made that difficult. So in some senses, having the multifamily fit the site much better. Um, part of that was having the single access. There was a vacant lot um on the north side of Bluestone that was sold uh by the owner. And, and by the way, as an aside, the, the owner of this property was the original owner of the entire site and the entire development. Um, so in some senses, this was kind of the last phase of his project coming in over the decades that came in. Um, but in any case, they sold off one of those lots that would have provided a second access going into that, which would have made it much more feasible for single-family. So having the single access come in, coming into that property works much better under fire code than doing single-family units. Unless they were to somehow obtain a, a, a house and, and punch a road through at some point. The other issue they ran into is under the subdivision rules for the city, which are local regs and not, not state or federal regs, uh, we've got the uh buffer setback off of the creek, which pinches that down. So if you leave it in with just, there's two lots there currently, two tracks, um, you don't have some of the same immediate concerns. Um, as part of the CUP process, um, they are addressing um some of those setback requirements. They'll be doing a geotech report as part of the building permit process. Some of those soil concerns would be, would be addressed. Maintaining some of the setback off of the creek um also takes it away from the top of the bank so that you're addressing some of those um geotech um concerns uh that would be in there. Um, but still, by maintaining this, essentially a single parcel through there as opposed to a subdivision, um, work much better in a couple of different ways.
Um, there were a few people that questioned the geotechnical. Can you just kind of go through the setbacks on that and how they, those were um, how they came up with those? I see there's a seventy-five foot from the top of the bank. Maybe just speak about that a little bit.
Yeah, so their preliminary geotechnical uh report was a uh fifty-five foot uh setback from the top of the bank, as you can see right here. Uh, so that's fifty-five uh back, and then they total from Ashley Creek from here all the way to here is two hundred feet.
So where, where does the property terminate up to the north? Is it at Ashley Creek?
Uh, no, it continues more north all the way through the um, on the other side of the creek.
Okay.
But the no- the north part of this property is in Flood Plain.
Okay.
So what we have in front of us right now is um, the annexation. So um, I guess what I'm wondering, sometimes this does, and sometimes it doesn't, but with annexation, is that when zoning comes in with it? Cause I don't see anything for zoning as far as a.
Right. So in, in some senses, you can break this down into three separate steps that you're looking at or three separate considerations. And I think a lot of the concerns come with the conditional use permit and how the site is being developed. Um, annexation is just whether it comes into the city limits or not.
Right. But does the zoning come in with that?
And zoning would come in. So typically, you're looking at annexation and the initial zoning of, of what's there. When you're looking at the initial zoning, it should be consistent with the land use map.
The original motion.
Yeah, it should be consistent with the land use map, um, which shows this as urban residential, which supports both R four and RA one zoning um, under our zoning ordinance as well as the growth policy. And in terms of the annexation, it is a wholly surrounded area.
Yeah.
Um, and so um, it's, it's within our annexation boundary, which is part of the growth policy. So in some senses, the annexation itself um, and the zoning itself um are right in line with everything that's there. I think most of the concerns that have been expressed, both by the public and, and the board, have been tied more to the conditional use permit um, than the annexation zoning.
Yeah, and that's why I was wanting to get back to the, the actual, what we, what we got in front of us here is the annexation. Cause I don't see a problem with the annexation being that's wholly surrounded and everything and, and the, the zoning would go through and and, and work in that area. So um, is there any further discussion on that?
I guess just looking at the zoning, um, can you just point out, it's not exactly that clear where the setbacks are, especially in that southern um part of the property, no, the southern part of the actual property there? Can you just kind of show that faint line there? Is that the actual setback? Is that the five feet or ten feet? What is that?
It says. It's. It says side yard, five, uh, five-foot setback and then.
Right, so that's, so that's a five-foot setback there. So those buildings are, what, twenty-five feet back from that setback? Is that, am I reading that right?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you.
And if approved, they would have, it would be, I would say, if approved, they would be required to be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan.
With what?
They'd be required to be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan if this were to be approved.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Ask more later in the CUP.
Okay, um, I guess we'll get a roll call on annexation.
Annexation and zone, right?
Yep.
Annexation and zone.
Pip Burke?
Aye.
Joshua Borgart?
Aye.
Doug Kaufman?
Yes.
Shelby LeCron?
Oh.
Could you repeat that?
I said no.
Okay, thank you. Kate Walker?
Yes.
Chad Graham?
Aye.
Okay, so I'll look for a motion on the conditional use permit. KCU twenty-five dash zero four.
Well, I'll move that the Kalispell City Planning Commission adopts staff report. KCU dash twenty-five dash oh four is finding the fact and recommend to this Kalispell City Council that the conditional use permit be approved subject to the following conditions. I'm sorry, as the published conditions.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion seconded. Probably a more in-depth discussion here on the conditional use permit. So have at it.
I had a question about one of the things, um, hold on, I gotta pull it up on my phone. It had to do with the um things that they considered when it came to the impacts. Uh, it talked about, you know, schools and stuff. I thought we didn't take that into consideration anymore, especially now that everything's in capacity. So I was just wondering, are we still considering that or is that being, you know, ignored? Or is, am I completely wrong?
Go ahead, PJ.
Under state's uh subdivision statutes, you can't look at the um impact on the schools as the sole reason for denying a subdivision. Um, it's conditional use permit here, but that's not one of the specific criteria that we really look at is, is impact on the schools. School question gets really complicated because of the equalization payments that are out there. And when you actually look at um, some of the numbers that have been provided to us from um School District Five, as well as some of the outlined rural districts, um, you know, there, there's a lot of kids in there, but they're not at overcapacity. Um, but in the way that state law works, there, they have their own bonding capacity. They get their own tax um uh revenue that comes in. Uh, they're their own separate entities. So the city doesn't regulate them or require them to add any buildings or anything. They're responsible uh for handling the kids on their own with that. So um, but where it comes more directly and is under subdivision rules as opposed to a CUP.
Hmm. Did you get that, Shelby?
Yep, I got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I got, it's my, I have a problem with I guess how the project would operate. Um, definitely heard a lot about the safety on Bluestone and, you know, done a lot of drive, I've driven Bluestone a lot. Um, and I, I go and I, I picture, you know, how does that work? I, I go and I, I picture, you know, how does that work? I'm like, I'm looking at however. I know that if this goes through and gets developed out as single family, it's still construction. These are the things I'm kind of throwing around in my head here. Uh, the no second access. Out of there or exit out. Uh, I think what you were saying is. It's different for apartment than it is for single family.
Right, so, single family, so part of it depends upon if you're looking under subdivision regulations or fire code and there's different ways that it gets treated. So under subdivision regulations, at fifty homes, it requires a second, um, access. Um, under subdivision regulations as well, a hundred, multi-family is where that gets triggered. Under fire code, that second access is required with the hundred units with the multifamily. Um, single family, you can act, actually thirty is kind of a breaking point in some ways. It requires fire sprinkling if you don't have the second access at, at that point. Um, so they are treated a little bit differently under fire code and, and subdivision rules.
And so they're just under the requirement.
Yes.
Just that they're compliant with, with fire code in terms of distance in as well as the, um, number of units that are served by it.
This is a little different topic, but I want to make sure I'm understanding this as well. So the extension of South Meadows Drive would become a. Street in the city of Kalispell, correct?
That's correct.
And then everything else would be dealt with privately maintenance, plowing, everything inside. Would all be done privately by the owner of this.
Yeah, everything except for the op- operation of the water main would be, um, privately maintained.
And then the sewer main would be a, uh, private extension as well?
Yeah, if, since it only serves a single lot, that section of sewer main would be privately maintained as well.
Thank you.
I have another question. I know I'm obnoxious tonight. Um, I'm wondering, is it possible to maybe do another traffic study? That includes baseball traffic because Bluestone is one of the main access points because it is psychotic down there. And I think it should be definitely taken into account.
I mean, we, we can definitely request that. There's nothing in our standards that would require it.
Is there public access to Ashley Creek at, currently? Is there a way for the neighborhood to use that space?
Well, it's private property that's there.
Okay.
There is a public right of way. Right away that goes up undeveloped right away, but it's otherwise private property.
Okay.
So, so I think one of the things.
I, I, let me, I just wanna actually like dig into this a little bit, uh, just from the numbers game. Um. Toby, I've got some questions for you. I am not an engineer, but I would love to have engineering things explained to me and to everybody so that we grasp what's, what the. Problems are. It sounds like there are three and maybe there's a duplicate of one of them, maybe two. Uh, properties that have sink, uh, near this area, some of them on Bluestone and some of them. Uh, on the west portion, um, with comments about, uh, some of the aspects. At which this is a swamp, how much landfill from an engineering perspective has to come in there, number one. And number two, uh, I, my office where I work, they had to drop the entire thing because they didn't know. Ahead of time, uh, before the architectural plans, that the area had some massive issues. So they discovered these problems. So then there are amendments to construction, uh, with these bigger apartment complexes. I assume you have to do, uh, tremendous, uh, like a very large difference in that type of stabilization pattern. Uh, can you explain that part to the cr- to the people of Kalispell and to me? Uh, what are the things that are there? And the other part is, uh, technically speaking, uh, that road. Uh, do we know what is the maximum that can be carried? Uh, I just, you know, doing quick math, we're talking forty to fifty thousand pounds. For a vehicle and the reality is, is can that road even survive that? Uh, how many trips can it survive? Uh, some of the builds that have gone on and where people excavate themselves out of the state. Uh, in the winter time, we have a fantastic, uh, almost looks like the desert road where it just dips up and down. Um, what are the things that, uh, we're gonna worry about that? So please explain that.
Yes, I'll start by unpacking the, the geotechnical side from, uh, the city of Kalispell standard today is if you're doing. A residential subdivision, you're doing a geotechnical site characterization that looks at suitability of crawl spaces and basements for a project. Uh, the portion along Bluestone, as was mentioned by Keith, is a fairly old subdivision. The rules were certainly different at that time. Um, in terms of a commercial building, which a multifamily is considered commercial from a state building permit standpoint. Um, the city of Kalispell and the building code requires a site-specific geotechnical study be done. That provides foundation recommendations. We also get recommendations for pavement and drainage and utilities and. Um, I don't recall the total number of borings, but we've done, I think it was at least twelve borings on the site. Depths range from, you know, five to ten feet is kind of common in your shallow or like parking lot areas down to thirty plus feet. To analyze what the soils are in that site. Um, they've done swell tests on the, you know, the fine grain. Clay materials that are there. Um, below the clay, there's actually gravel material. So. We're providing a, a site-specific geotechnical study that's providing recommendations that get reviewed by both the planning department. Not planning, excuse me, public works and the building department. Um, in terms of the existing Bluestone drive capacity, um, having driven there, obviously not as many, as often as. The folks here in the room today, this evening, um, I've certainly seen city streets in worse shape from a surface standpoint. Part of that may be with some of the drainage improvements through there. They may have resurfaced it since the nineteen seventies. Um, typically pavement design, we look at a twenty to thirty year design life and the. They effectively look at the equivalent single axle load for a road based on traffic. Um, in terms of trying to analyze what section is there, you certainly could do borings along that road to establish what is the section. Um, cause I, I wasn't alive in the nineteen seventies. Um, you know, I've been in Kalispell area for a long time, but. I can't speak to what's there currently.
So you said single axle? So the context is bringing in gravel, uh, is not gonna be a double axle vehicle?
So it's equivalent single axle, so that, the, basically they, when you look at actually high volume roads, which. Uh, Bluestone is far from a high volume road. They. I'm starting to get out of my specific area of expertise from a traffic standpoint, but the equivalent single axle load. On say an interstate through LA is gonna have a higher proportion of single axle vehicles. And so they take those multiple axle vehicles and equate it to effectively a single axle. So, you know, one semi is gonna be worth. X number of equivalent single axle. Kind of very watered down layman.
That's okay. So the weight of the vehicle doesn't have a relationship with the capacity of the road from a weight perspective?
So if we are working on a project site and you're surfacing in your pavement section, so. The geotechnical engineer does analysis on the existing soils, looks at the, the traffic volume and provides their pavement recommendations to hit a certain. Capacity. And that capacity results in X inches of gravel, you know, uh, like a three inch minus pit run. A crush base course and then pavement thickness. So they provide recommendations to us based on. How much volume is gonna occur in that design life? And so they do take into account the vehicles. Where you find sometimes is like in the interim on a construction site. So like if we're bringing in the utilities in and we're driving on a gravel surface, sometimes the. The traffic load on a, on a unfinished surface can have different implications than what your final design looks like. But there would be a way to analyze what the existing street has and try and.
So it's thirty or maximum in terms of construction. It was said to seventy-eight, so we're pretty much at the end of that particular cycle. Is it possible that you guys can consider to help everybody like look at that possibility? Cause. The city, is the city gonna be responsible for that? Are you gonna be responsible for that?
I think the best way I can answer is, is driving on the section from Airport Road to the project site. That section of Bluestone, in my opinion, does not look like nineteen seventies asphalt. So. Whether it's been chip sealed, resurfaced, an overlay was done, something's been done since that timeframe. Um, part of the asphalt life has to do with asphalt material gets brittle and starts to break down. So part of the reason they seal coat, do chip seals. Is to, you know, as part of a maintenance plan. Um, driving through Kalispell, there's definitely city streets in worse surface shape.
No, agreed. Um, I guess the next question is the width of the vehicles with a. Uh, continual traffic of construction, will the width of a dump truck, and I don't know how many trips you're gonna have to take. But I can imagine, uh, more than a hundred, um, probably more than that. Part of the context is. Has there ever been a discussion about how that would affect the road and the safety from a builder's perspective? Does a builder know this? Does a builder care?
Um, I guess I'd back into a, a little bit from the standpoint of, um, maybe the city can answer if. With an older standard street, I know on-street parking is happening. I'm not sure when that's allowed versus not allowed. So I think that's worth some consideration. Um, you know, I know a lot of cars are partly on the pavement, partly off. Definitely, you know, it, it is an area that, you know, there are a lot of cars. Um, in terms of the. Um, responsibility, I think Keith with Public Works mentioned that the. Right away permit that they have to work within the city right away and get to the project site can certainly be. Reviewed and they can decide what conditions they want to place on it. Um, in terms of the construction traffic, I look at it a couple of ways and I'm, I. I think if you have multiple single family lots out there and the, and developer develops the lots and sells the lots and then people build on it. The duration, the frequency, the number of contractors that you have potentially would be quite a bit more. In the case of a multifamily in one consolidated project. You have one general contractor with their subs and trades. Um, they may sequence it tighter, you know, on a single family residential subdivision. It could build out over five or ten years. Um, so I think it's hard to know exactly how that's going to play out. In terms of numbers from a multifamily versus a single family type development.
Cool, okay. So I got, um, free, I apologize for you. Okay, thank you. All good. Um, and curious, uh, what initiated the speed bumps, uh, at the time? What, what was the process? Was it a complaint, uh, based process?
Yep, yeah, so, um, we had multiple complaints on Denver for speed and so. Um, we actually go out, we measure the speed and verify that it's actually a, a problem. Um, and, and typically when we do a speed analysis, we're looking at that eighty-fifth percentile. If the eighty-fifth percentile. Is, um, over the supposed speed limit, then you can identify that there's a speed problem there. So. Yeah, it was actually kind of a trial, um, for us. Those are the only two speed humps that we have in the city of Kalispell. Um, we do have, you know, the, the raised crosswalks on the park line. Um, those are, those are also a traffic calming measure. Um, but in order to construct something like that, that's. Like twenty-four thousand dollars is what I got for a cost on four mile drive for a raised crosswalk.
Yeah.
Versus our crews going out, um, when they were already doing a paving project. We tacked that additional work onto the project to install the speed humps when they were reconstructing Denver Avenue. Or, it was a Milne overlay. Yeah, like I said, it was, it was a learning project, you know, we had. Yep, yeah, we don't, there's no, uh, there's no standard for it. We're, we're learning as we go. And so that was a, a trial to address. Speed, yep.
One quick question, was there a study done after the speed humps?
Yes, there was, um, and it's kind of a mixed bag. You know, the, at, at the speed humps, certainly there's a decrease. Um, but outside of the speed humps, they, the traffic increases or the, the speeds increase again. And so it's, uh, there, there's over, an overall decrease in speed, but, um, not as much as. We anticipated there might be.
So can you, can you name, uh, an area in which there, we've done as a city? A very high density in comparison to everyone else on a road that was developed, no offense, kind of like the county. Right? Can you explain that without improvements, uh, to the road, uh, as either a city or the builder?
I mean, I, I think the, um, the, was it crossing the landings at two mile would be a, a. An example of that on two mile drive, you know, the only responsibilities, there's like this was their frontage on the, the road. Um, and then outside of that, you know, two mile turns into a rural cross-section again.
Okay, so that's pretty much about the only one that I personally can think of lately that, that that occurred. Um, where we have a moment where we haven't tried to update the city, uh, sidewalks. And don't get me wrong. I get that it's expensive. That's not, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm just talking about the logic of progression, uh, in it. That's just what it is.
Yeah, but the Lofts of Ashley would be another one. You know, they, they had to improve their frontage again, but there was no increase in. Um, you know, road width or anything like that.
Okay.
Well. For me. This doesn't feel like a fit into the neighborhood for me, the way this is being proposed. Um, I've taken everything in that I'm hearing.
I've, I've taken everything that I'm, you know, hearing, you know, in all areas. And the road. Bluestone, the way it's put together, the condition of it. With the added traffic from this proposal. In conduct, in con- conjunction with and added to the actual construction impact. It doesn't feel like it, it fits. I mean, I know it could, I know it could work, but. I get into that safety aspect. I find myself jumping into, for a different reason, I do find myself jumping into. The Tronstat. There was. There was problems for me with Tronstat and unfortunately for this one, there's nothing I can do to go through and address that. With that one, I could. Um. And I'm just, I just, I don't know that this, I certainly don't think it fits the neighborhood. The way the neighborhood's been put together. I, I can agree with, you know, the neighborhood on that. Um. The other aspect is, you know, I know we have geotechnical reports and everything, uh, studies and all that. And I, I wanna be careful about going and saying, I'm not a geotech. I don't, I don't know. But what I do know is the history of the area.
Yep.
I know the history of the duck streets. And, and the flooding in the basements. This is gonna have a basement, but the sinking of the houses and. From a long time ago, I really kind of thought that a lot of it was built on fill.
It's a landfill, right?
And filled it over.
Yeah.
Um, maybe not this spot here, but just. Uh, like I said, I wanna get, I wanna be careful of getting into something I don't know anything about, which is geotechnical. But I do know the area.
Right, and there are ways to mitigate that with helical piers and that sort of thing, driven piles. You know, there's all sorts of things they can do to mitigate that from a structural standpoint. But I don't think, at least for me, that's the crux of the issue here. Like. I, I'm more concerned about. Access and, and safety of the neighborhood.
In, in theory, and I mean this, we create, we, we know create, you guys make recommendations and we approve them. For city rules of, of creation of things. In this particular case, the retroactive aspect in which. We can say, hey, these, these, the, the, the streets maybe should be up to. Maybe should be up to actual city standards in order for us to prove this type of project. And, and I think that is the, the, and I apologize, it's not that I'm mean to the county, but I don't generally enjoy them. Uh, the difference between county building and the new city building. We have to be mindful of that relationship and I'd have to say like, I don't know if you've ever had like kids die. Next to you, but it's not the best thing. You have to like go to like real counseling, right? And I'm not saying that that's what we wants to promote and this fear and all this other stuff. But the key is that's what everybody's fear is, and when we talk about recipes for disaster. The fact that we have a situation where the builder, no offense, not being here. Uh, I would have loved to have asked that person, well, just for a community's sake, would you consider uh doing the study? Uh, during baseball season? And would you do it at that intersection? Because that's the actual choke point. As I read the study, it wasn't occurred there, it occurred earlier on in other uh Eighth Avenue and whatnot. So my point is, is those are my big concerns, is the difference between county building and city building. And that's what we're approaching at the moment is this density problem. Uh, and with unfortunately three eighty-two, look it up, it's fun. It does not allow you to do this. I want you to hear that like a hundred times, oh, you guys have an opportunity to complain in very like distinct moments. Where it allows us to be like, yeah, this is the community that we want. Now, no offense, three eighty-two is written by not people in the state of Montana and some of them outside the United States. Go conspiracy theory, have fun, but you've gotta understand, like, we have a right to be able to do this. So I, we welcome you guys doing this. Don't feel guilty, don't feel bad, like, this is what we're here for. Oh, I got it in my mind, go for it. Oh, trust me, I already know, I, I got, I got photographic issue.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I've got it right here.
We'll keep with what we got.
Yeah.
Um. I, I agree.
Approached us and have like a work session.
Mm-hmm.
Where we can actually work, these are massive issues. That all of a sudden, the, the, the people have come up, if we would have just had a work session, maybe we can talk about concerns. Work through some of them.
Yeah, they chose not to do that. And I don't think that's necessarily uh a bad thing or a good thing.
Yep.
Um, I think that's a little outside the purvey of what we're doing right now.
Yeah.
I think we were running a risk of trying to tell someone how to design their project, rather than looking at what's in front of us right now. I also uh will say this, uh unfortunately, we can't. Uh, require the developer to go back and rebuild Bluestone.
No.
We just can't, that's not legal.
Nope.
So, in my opinion, I, I see some. Um, pretty attractive things with this project.
Yeah.
While I probably don't like the forty-five feet, I think they're actually trying to mitigate that. While I don't like the necessarily the numbers, um sometimes you have to have the numbers to do the project. Um, and also on the offside, I think infill is a good thing. Whether it's single-family, multifamily, this is infill. Anybody that says this is not infill, uh, something's wrong. And I'll leave it at that.
Any thoughts?
Is it viable to, uh. I guess during the, the, maybe I should ask you this, as I wanna make sure. The traffic study was not done on the intersection at the exit. Uh, of all of where this traffic would go to, not Eighth Street, uh but technically out, uh Bluestone.
Yeah, I'll, I can tell you what intersections were looked at. So the traffic counts were taken at Beg Park Drive and Airport Road, Beg Park Drive, Bluestone Drive. South Meadows Drive and Bluestone Drive, Denver Avenue, Bluestone Drive, Denver Avenue and Sunnyside Drive. And Denver Avenue, and I can't read it, I think it might, might be Teal, I'm not sure, on the south end.
Teal, cause Teal connects.
Yeah. Uh, so, so the way that our, our uh requirements work. Is once they do meet the requirement to complete a TIS, we have a scale of how far out from that um project site. They have to look at intersections and that's based on the peak hour from the development. So that's, that's what was followed in this plan and, and meets our requirements.
Okay.
Yes, um Doug, you had said something that I, I. That you said that you think we're a risk here of redesigning, you know, the applicant's project, and I, I kinda disagree with that though. Because I'm being asked to go through and look at it and determine whether or not I think the project fits and works. And so, you know, I guess maybe through that process, if I'm coming to the conclusion that it does or it doesn't, or that it doesn't. Um, I guess the. Next course of action for the applicant would be to go through and figure out, you know, from what they're hearing in this process, what does work.
Yeah.
And so, um, I don't generally like to go that way with things. Cause I know that, you know, that this process go all, it has costs associated with it and everything. And it's, it's not very often we actually get into a situation like this. A lot of stuff comes in, it's. It, it's fairly, fairly easy, it's fairly obvious. Um, but every now and then I open my packet and I'm like, oh boy, here we go. Um, and uh, you know. A lot of this comes down to gut feeling too, you know, I go through and I, I take and apply that, and I'm like, I don't, I can't get behind it. For, for, for the reasons that I've gone through and talked about.
And, and I know that this is the most subjective way of looking at this at the moment. However, if I were to say if rules were rules. Technically speaking, this does much better in a community in which uh has more than one. Point of access, uh realistically to some type of thoroughfare. It does have two points of access, however, getting there, you have to do a lot of zigging, a lot of zagging. And that behavior, I don't know if that is a study to be done or things can be done this way. But it's kind of like trying to stick uh an expectation into a old, older area. It, it's different if it's on the side, it's different if it's on uh closer to the highway. But this is in the middle of no man's land in the center of everything, and that's the gut feeling. It just feels like, hmm, this is technically, you know, they're wanting to do. And to be honest with you, the, how many homes they could stick legally? After three eighty-two gets passed, that's a different conversation altogether. Because they can just throw them in and nobody'd ever know, and that's just the end of it. That's where working with a builder is, that's where I fear. Because if there's a lot of resistance, waiting a couple of months, and then just throwing it up, calling it a day, and nobody says anything. Or nobody can say anything realistically, that's what I worry about, so, I don't know, maybe I'm just weird.
Well, there's a little bit of a process, but it's not this.
Yeah. It's, it's a bad process.
Um, alright, so I guess we've, we've really kinda gone through and tossed this around quite a bit unless. There's other discussion from the rest of the commission.
Are there conditions we can stick on this?
There's a whole, there's a whole list of written conditions already there, and that's what I was gonna bring up, is I believe. I believe that the writ, the conditions as they're written now provide protection. We could also go back and actually add conditions if you're willing to put some forward and they are all approved by the board, sure.
Well, I don't know which one, I don't, I, I know we can add conditions and stuff, I just don't know what condition I would go through and add that would go and.
I mean, if a traffic study is done during baseball season?
Well, that's number six.
The condition that they build townhouses, not apartments, possibly.
Well, that's, can't do that.
You can't dictate that.
So condition number six, duh, uh.
Yeah, condition number six actually says to ensure traffic flow and access comply with Kalispell standards. For design and construction, the development shall incorporate the recommendations from the traffic impact study. Proposed installations will be reviewed and approved by Public Works and installed prior to issuance of a pub, of a building permit.
Yeah, that's something he's talking about though.
Yeah, I'm talking about during baseball season, not.
But what I was gonna suggest, you could condition the studies of traffic study to be actually completed during.
Heavy usage.
I mean, that's a simple adding like several small words.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I'd vote for it, but I'm just saying, I think you could do that.
I mean, we've had traffic studies done uh during times when we have low studies, and I've always wondered why that that's the case rather than. Summertime.
Well, sometimes to meet that whole development schedule, you have to do them and you can do them.
Yeah.
Is that what you're wanting to do?
Not logical from the process, I'm just wanting to throw it in the air so that everyone hears it. Cause we still, we still have voting from council members that are elected officials.
Not, we'll get into that. Uh, alright, I guess let's get a roll call.
Doug Kaufman?
Yes.
Joshua Borgart?
Nay.
Kate Walker?
Nay.
Pip Burke?
Aye.
Shelby Lechrone?
Nay.
Chad Graham?
No. Guess if my math is right, that's showing that it failed, okay. Alright, so uh next steps for that then, for, for this item.
So in terms of the overall process, as you mentioned earlier, so there's no final decisions made tonight. So this board makes a recommendation that gets forwarded to city council. Um, so the next council meeting would be August fourth, um in chambers here, seven o'clock. Um, I'd say, you know, one thing is you don't have a motion that's passed, so I think that you would need to pass a motion. Cause right now there's no recommendation to move forward on that. Um, so you can do the, you know, you can follow with that, you can also make a motion to table it if you wanted to develop information in here. Um, and address some of those questions and bring it back at a later date in here before you pass the recommendation, but at this point, you don't have, you made a motion to. Approve it, that motion was denied, so there's been no approved motion for a recommendation. So at this point, I think your options would be to have a motion to recommend denial and pass that to city council. Or you could also make a motion to table it, um and try to bring some of that information forward. I'd say the reason we, there wasn't a work session is that's only required with the planning and development, not a CUP.
I know.
So it wouldn't have been here, but it seemed like there were some specific concerns that were brought up. Um, and that could be something that between staff and um the developer could try to bring some of that additional information in. Before you pass that recommendation on to city council, so which direction you go with that is up to the board, but I think you still need to make a formal. Determination because you don't have a approved motion.
Yeah, you can see how many times we've done this, um.
Can we table it so that we can have more conversations about it?
Yeah.
Okay.
What are you gonna do? What, what, what more conversation you have?
In which the builder can speak with the planning department and create uh some things after. Because the, being, the builder's not here, there's no like way to like discuss these options. And I just feel like having an opportunity for them to work with the planning department, we can then bring it back.
That's up, that's up to you guys, if man, what, whatever the commission is wanting to do, I mean, we can, we move it into a work session.
I don't think it'd be a work session, it'd be on the regular agenda at the next meeting.
You're saying table and bring it off the table.
Yep.
Got it.
And table, they, the builder has a, a awesome right to discuss what we're concerned with, and I think that they should be given that.
If we allow him to speak, because this is technically just board talk now.
Yeah.
Well, how do we table something we've already voted on?
We just voted down that motion to forward it with a positive. With a positive.
Okay. So we're gonna start a new motion?
Yeah, we need, someone needs to start a new motion.
Either way, either way, there needs to be a new motion.
Either way, there needs to be a new motion so we can reach some, some finality tonight.
Sure. What's a legal way to say that?
So, you know, again, it depends upon what direction you wanna take with that, so you can just make a motion, well. You, you would need a motion on the floor to then table it, so you can't just go straight into a motion to table.
Okay.
So you can make a motion to, somebody else can make a motion to approve it, you can make a motion to recommend denial. Um, you would need some basis for that, that it doesn't fit within the neighborhood for various reasons. Um, and then somebody could make a motion to table, and if that motion were to then be approved, then you can bring it back at the next meeting. And have additional discussion based on additional information.
So we can't table it right off the bat, we actually have to make a recommendation.
You're tabling a motion, so yeah, you're not tabling the project, you're tabling a motion.
I mean, I recommend uh to table this due to the fact that the, the concerns that we've had regarding the fit. Within the uh current neighborhood and the current limitations that might be applied uh due to construction.
I'll second the motion to table.
Second is, there's no discussion on tabling, is there?
No, so you can vote.
So. Is that a roll call? Okay.
So we're voting on tabling?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Pip Burke?
Aye.
Kate Walker?
Aye.
Joshua Borgart?
Aye.
Shelby Lechrone?
Aye.
Doug Kaufman?
Uh. Aye.
Chad Graham?
Aye. So when would that be tabled to then?
Our next meeting is August twelfth.
Okay. So August twelfth, this has been tabled to August twelfth to have continuation of. I guess with.
Yeah, what kind of design stuff they came up with, right?
Yeah, we'll take the, I mean, once it's been tabled, there's no additional discussion on that, but, you know, we'll, we'll take the comments that are here and.
Okay.
Developers representative was here and, and could try to develop some of those questions and have additional answers for you at that time.
Alright, alright, thank you. So August, August twelfth, here, six o'clock. That concludes the public hearing this evening. Um, before I get into old business, wanna let everybody know, stick around, we're gonna be talking about three eighty-two. Wanna have a lot of fun, stick around. Um, but that'll be last, we have a item in front of us, in front of that. It's uh K P U D twenty-five dash zero three, Monterise Developments. It's an application at Silverbrook Village. Um, eleven point seven acres, zone B one, the P U D overlay. This proposal would maintain the underlying zoning designation. The proposal calls for two hundred twenty-eight residential units intended to be developed as condominiums with the variety of housing types. Ranging from two-unit buildings or larger multi-unit buildings. And then our second item in our work session is the continuation of uh the Montana Land Use Act. Senate Bill three eighty-two. This is the tenth uh session in our series, and it's going to focus on. The discussion of chapters of the preliminary draft land use plan. That's a, I guess it's gonna be called twenty, Planet Twenty Forty-Five. So, old business.
Okay, um, old business, so we had four projects that came through last month. Uh, there was um, um, the Johnson Ranch project up uh near the high school, Glacier High School. Um, because there was a growth policy amendment that was involved with that, um, council first. Council first needed to pass a resolution of intent to hold a public hearing, um and then actually would be holding the public hearing um at its next meeting on July twenty-first, uh so no action's been taken other than setting that public hearing. Uh, other project was uh Anderson Ranch, which was down um in the south end of town where Amazon's going in at. And that involved this little sliver of annexation, but it was mainly the P U D and the subdivision, and that was approved on first reading. I said I'd have second reading coming up there. Um, the accessory casino at Montana Prime Steakhouse uh here on Main Street was approved by council. As well as the um Corwin Annexation, there was a couple of properties there between the existing Corwin and the bridge. Um, annexation was approved, but second reading on the zoning would be pending for that.
Okay, new business.
So, new business, um, the one item that we would have is if if you move it from a work session would be the modernized development project in Silverbrook.
Okay. Anything from the commission? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting, we'll move into the uh mentioned uh work session immediately after, and we're adjourned. Do you wanna, need need to? We'll take a sh- a short break.
Still not finding anything.
Put it in, put it in the motion.
For. I, whatever, I I can't participate in. We just said we didn't like it. Yeah.
The uh work session.
Straight up.
You had to go, alright, let's go ahead and get started here.
Okay, so um Silverbrook Village, modernized developments, LLC has submitted applications for Silverbrook Village, uh which is an amendment to the Silverbrook Plan Unit Development, or P U D. Uh, the property, which contains eleven point seven acres, would have a hundred and ninety-eight residential units intended to be developed as condominiums uh with a variety of housing types ranging from two-unit buildings to larger multi-unit buildings. Uh, the proposal also has um twenty thousand four hundred square feet of neighborhood business uses that are included within mixed-use buildings. It's located at four forty-one and four sixty-five Diamond Peak Drive. Uh, when you look at the aerial here, you've got the highway with the junior interchange and church drive, and you can see, you know, World Gym right up in this area. Um, some of the existing apartments that are in place um right through here, there's two existing blocks um that are in place, and they would be developing on those two uh with an existing city street uh running through the center. In terms of infrastructure, you've got water and sewer uh surrounding the uh subject property. And it's just a shot of that site uh looking from the uh northwest. Uh, it's currently zone B one uh with the P U D overlay, uh B one supports uh the use that's being proposed. Um, this um is included within a neighborhood commercial high-density residential node under the growth policy. Uh, we've dealt with that a couple of these different, uh with a couple of different projects recently. Um, but that was what led to the the B one zoning and the mixed-use type of proposal that's in place. So this is showing the original phase two, and you can kind of see the overall phase one, um kind of on the southern part. Phase two was what was being intended up here with the high-density residential in this corner, neighborhood commercial, and then uh two other single-family areas that are coming through. Um, preliminary plat um was granted through this uh Riverside North uh area, uh Creekside North hasn't come in quite yet. Uh, when you look at the overall Silverbrook development, there's six hundred and ninety-four units were allowed through the overall development under um the current approvals. Uh, the existing phases that are in place plus areas with preliminary plats, uh which would specifically be Riverside North. Uh, plus the apartments uh in this high-density residential area right there, uh would total six hundred and thirty-eight or fifty-six units left uh for these two parcels we're looking at, as well as the remainder of the northern area that hasn't been preliminarily platted, uh which is the Creekside North, so a lot of the reason behind this P U D is uh increasing the density numbers from that original approval that was done back, um, I'm trying to remember, two thousand seven or whatever it was. Um, this is kind of showing the image of what's through there, we can see, you know, the single family uh in the outer areas, the higher density that's existing in place um with the uh business area up on the north and this kind of filling in um in that center area. And again, that's just kind of zeroing in on this uh specific site, uh you can see the mix of buildings that are be coming through here and have more detailed description here uh with some of these facing onto uh Montura Ridge, uh but not having any direct access onto that. It'd be served through this, um, it's not an alleyway per se, uh but it would serve in a lot of ways like an alley. Um, you would have other mixes of housing types that would be coming through here, um and then the center area is where uh East Swift Creek runs through uh which is an eighty-foot right-of-way, and this is where you'd have those mixed-use buildings uh facing into the middle with the commercial um mixed-use on the main floor and uh the condo units above them. So this kind of breaks down uh the housing types, and you can kind of see how that's, this is laid out, the yellow um are basically looking like townhome, two-unit townhomes uh facing out towards uh the outer portion of this, where there's single family across uh the street. Um, the blue would be uh two-unit townhomes, a different type of of two-unit townhomes, but it's kind of transitioning into those as you're getting further to the east. Uh, in this pink area is where you'd have, again, those mixed-use units uh facing in there, so very much like a, a, you know, what you'd expect on a Main Street look with um with the buildings facing uh towards the um, that roadway. The purple uh would have rowhouse condos that'd be running through there. Uh, orange would be additional rowhouse condos, slightly different design, and then with the red was really more of what you would would give the appearance of more of a multifamily, but would be condos as well, everything through the development here would be, would be condominiums. Uh, this is showing the uh preliminary plat, the phasing. Um, I'm sorry, not preliminary plat, preliminary phasing that would be associated with that, uh phase one uh anticipated in twenty twenty-five to twenty-seven, and stepping through with phase two uh on the east, three, four, and five. Um, in terms of some of these overall layout too, um, you know, staff did work with them on the proposal in terms of the lining, where these accesses would be. Um, how water and sewer service would be coming through the area, uh we did want to minimize the direct access onto the outer outer areas, which is one reason why you see uh the alleyway coming through here, um and trying to keep those individual accesses into the common parking lots that run through, uh and then accessing at main points. And, that's really all I had with that, um, there's not too much going on with this, it's just a P U D, uh it's already annexed, it's already zoned. Um, again, it's mainly adjusting some of the overall um number of dwelling units uh that are within the overall P U D. Um, and no subdivision plat with that, so if there's any questions that you'd have, be happy to to go over those and the developers here as well.
I don't have any.
I just had one, oh, I'm sorry. I just had one question, and it was regarding a specific detail that I saw in the packet that was like at-grade sidewalks with the street, or maybe it was that pseudo alley? Am I misremembering that?
It it may have been for the um approaches, the the drive approaches to the street, we want to make sure that the sidewalk remains at-grade.
No, it it wasn't that, it was like right alongside, at-grade, no curb, like, that seems like a significant safety hazard to me, so I'm not sure where that's being used, but.
Do you know where that is?
Yeah, that's the alley.
So, yeah, go ahead, so. It's Mike Brody, he's the engineer on the project, so we could maybe answer that.
Thank you.
Um, Mike Brody, four through one, First Avenue West, um, the consultant on this. Um, so the at-grade sidewalk is kind of proposing like a Warner F concept, if you can, it's only through between the yellow and the blue there. Um, the intent there is just to build that sidewalk a little thicker, so there is the ability to utilize that in particular because of the number of driveways we had through there. Um, and it's it's only proposed there and then on the eastern half of the property in front of those orange units there. Um, and the remainder of it is um primarily parking lot, it's just more than anything to designate a specific zone of that alley, and I want to say we have that including that sidewalk, I want to say it was twenty-seven feet wide. Um, but just knowing the um type of traffic that's gonna happen with there, um in there to try to keep the roads narrow, but also um there's a significant amount of sidewalk proposed throughout this in addition to the existing lots that have sidewalks surrounding them already on the outside. So it was just kind of one way to save space and um try to create kind of like, i- if you use the alleys in downtown Kalispell, you know that they're kind of, they're pedestrian ways in a lot of ways. Um, and so the idea here is to keep them like that, like an alley functions, but also have a designated pedestrian area there as well.
So no parking on the side in the Vironoff areas?
Correct.
Perfect.
And there is driveways on all of those areas, so they have twenty feet of space on the driveways in addition to that five feet there.
And this is gonna be very similar to the other areas that we've approved where uh you're responsible or they're responsible for the snow removal and that kind of behavior, it's not considered city route?
Yeah, correct, all all the interior um roads are, and parking lots are private, privately owned and maintained. In in addition to um east of the access there, it, the surrounding parking lot there is also private.
So all the sidewalks adjacent to the parking lots and the main roads are typical, like they're.
Parking parking lots have raised sidewalks, correct, yeah, and the roads um already exist on the outside, the the public roads already exist, so that, um, it does propose restriping um the main road through that East Swift, East Swift Creek Way to accommodate some more parking there, just knowing that it it was constructed as a wide road with this intention um for a previous proposal. Um, however, um it it's it's overly wide for that short of a period, and there's ample space to provide angled parking and parallel parking in there, pretty similar, included in the application a picture of um Fifth Street West um which has the same configuration. But yeah, I guess all all the, the other sidewalks would be um roughly six inches above the asphalt.
Yeah. I don't have any more questions.
Okay, I I think it makes sense to move it forward.
Okay.
Is there any additional information that the board or the commission would want to see uh at the the public hearing next month?
And, no, I I like it, I think it's it's much more efficient.
I think it should move forward too.
I like the angle parking.
Yeah, I don't really see anything that I'd.
May make one more point too, um, while there are multifamily style units in this, um, this is gonna be a hundred percent owner-occupied product. Um, the intent is to condo the entire area, including the commercial um mixed-use. So I think that's a little bit different from what we were just talking about, but at the same time fairly unique in most of the proposals we've seen going through, at least in Kalispell. I don't know if I've seen a condo project go forward in a, in a while, but I think this is kind of interesting to see something like this coming forward.
So I, yeah, I guess move it forward.
Okay.
And I think it's, is the way it is, I don't, I don't need anything else.
Okay, alright, so we'll see that on the August twelfth then.
Okay, thank you. Alright, uh, Senate Bill three eighty-two.
Yeah, let me see our.
Continuation.
There we go. Okay, so we sent this on in the packets, so you know, it's not a huge chunk that we're looking at uh tonight, it's a little bit of a follow-up from from the last meeting as well. I'm not sure if you guys had a chance to look at that, but um really this is kind of the the introduction section and kind of revisiting the vision statement um that we talked about last time. Um, just kind of scrolling down, um, I think people were generally comfortable with um the vision statement before. Um, got tweaked just a little bit on here, um, but basically what it says, the commercial and government, Kalispell is the commercial governmental center of the Flathead Valley. With a diverse economy, robust employment, and vibrant neighborhoods offering a variety of housing options uh where community history and culture are celebrated, parks are abundant, well-maintained. Greenways and trails connect the community and public services provide for the needs of residents and visitors alike while meeting future growth demands. Um, I said, I think people were generally in line with that uh the last time, there weren't any real concerns with that, um, just wanted to make sure that, you know, with this final version is something everybody's still comfortable with. Okay, chapter one would be addressing um general existing conditions and population projections, we'd have a chapter on community growth and design. Chapter three is one that we looked at a couple of months ago where we had a draft of that, um, looking at existing conditions, analysis of constraints and potential. looking at existing conditions, analysis of constraints, and potential actions. But housing is one of the key components of this and one of the main reasons why three eighty-two was passed by the legislature. One of the big chapters would be on local services, looking at public safety, utility services, transportation, education, and parks, economic development, section on natural resources, environmental hazards, which would include existing conditions, but sand and gravel, things related to peregrine, surface groundwater, floodplain, wildlife. And then hazards, again, looking at seismic geology slopes, flooding, and so forth. We'd attach the land use map that we would have in place. This is an existing map for the most part. Don't think that there's really any major changes, if any, that we're looking at as far as that land use map, so this would be incorporating essentially what we currently have in place. An implementation chapter, so part of what we need to do is look at the any inconsistencies between what the plan is and what our regulations are and update our regulations. It could be having, you know, as in under eight point five capital improvements and facilities that we would need to do as part of our capital improvements plan. But really trying to make sure that the plan gets implemented, isn't just a plan that's passed, but that there's steps taken to implement that plan. And then incorporating neighborhood area plans and any growth policy amendments, including appendices with facilities plans, transportation plans, et cetera.
Hey PJ, sorry, before you, I was noodling on maps. I know we updated some of those maps relatively recently. Generally, we just kind of went around the edges and looked at where they were and where maybe makes logical sense to to expand like the annexation boundary and that kind of thing.
Yeah, I mean, other than like the Tronstead project, we specifically expanded that. There was a couple that were up north with, just to the north of the Church Drive interchange, and then Tronstead, we expanded that. We haven't done anything where we looked holistically at the annexation boundary. There has been a couple of times that we've come through with some zoning, or it's not zoning, but the land use map amendments. There was some things around Airport Road, for example, given the fact that there was the the roundabout that was put in place there, where we kind of modified some of the anticipated uses that might go into that area. So there has been some updates, but we'd be looking at pretty much taking our existing one with those updates and rolling that into the plan. Scrolling down, so this kind of gets into the introduction chapter. I don't know if you've had a chance to read that, but this is where, you know, we put a lot of the description about Senate Bill three eighty-two or Montana Land Use Planning Act, Malupa, all three mean the same thing, really. But generally the process where that came, came through, and for the pull-up, there's ten cities in Montana, which include Kalispell, that we needed to adopt this updated land use plan. Not a lot different than our existing growth policy, but especially with housing, there's some key things that, that were different. But then we do need to update zoning regulations, subdivision regulations as part of that later down the, down the road.
Is this one of the areas where we, where we need to go through? I don't know, when this, when this three eighty-two was early on, there was, or we set the requirement, I'm not quite sure, to go through and put in as much as we could that site-specific projects were affected by this?
I'm not sure what you mean. You mean in terms when the legislature was adopting that, what they did?
Yeah, after, shortly after they went through and did it early on in the process, there was always language in whatever we sent out that was pointing to the change in the process on site-specific projects.
Right, so I guess I'm not clear. You're talking about the legislative action or the steps that we've done as the city to implement it?
No, I'm wondering, or is that, was, was that something that the legislature said? It's almost like there was a requirement of like seven places in the document where it had to be like inserted in to make sure people knew that there was a change. Are we doing that in this too?
Yes, and so some of that would be reflected in there. I think some of the specific language in the statute actually got amended out when they added in the notice provision. So if that stays, some of the strong language about requiring that as you're coming through, I, I think what it's more specifically talks about is in your public participation plan, as you're setting this out when we do some of the outreach events like we're doing this week. You're supposed to make it clear that now is the time to incorporate some of that comment. That site-specific development wouldn't have the same kind of public hearing that you would for C U Ps and for, for subdivisions. You would still have that public process for annexations and zoning and so forth along with it. But it's more in emphasizing that as you're adopting the plan, so that people know that this is the opportunity to make your voice heard on that. So again, just kind of stepping through this, this introduction and just kind of addressing, you know, housing affordability was one of the key reasons why the legislature did adopt this. And then just kind of stepping through, and that's really kind of all, all that's in there. So this is the introductory portion. I don't know if there was any suggestions after you guys had a chance to take a look at that of any tweaks that you would want to make to that, or what are any of your thoughts there?
I'm still stuck in the digesting side of it, so I don't really have anything right now.
And just to be clear too, you know, as, as we're stepping through this, you know, this is the tenth work session that we've done on that. We're taking little slices and talking about that. Just because we're talking about this language here doesn't mean that it can't be revisited later. You know, there will be a public hearing on adopting the whole land use plan down the road. And that'd be an opportunity for both the planning commission and the public to make any comments on that. So this isn't approving the language that's in here, but it's, it's working through these preliminary drafts with, between staff and the commission, but also having it open to the public to be, be part of that, because we want to be open and transparent with that.
Yeah, there was some clunky language in some of this, but I, I didn't go through in red line. But I, I'm sure we'll, it'll, it'll come out in the wash.
Okay. So if there's no comments, you know, we'll probably be planning on another work session with this, probably on, I'm assuming on the twelfth. I don't think we're doing a special session, work session in July. But we're still trying to turn forward with, with moving the, the plan forward. Again, with the statutory deadline that we have to meet, so.
Do, do you or, I, I don't, there are some brave survivors that stuck out. I'm assuming they probably want to know more about Senate Bill three eighty-two. Can they hang around to quiz you after or?
Yeah, it's either after here, where, you know, people can always get in contact with us by email or calling or setting up the time to come in and talk about it. So there's not just one way to come in and do that, but certainly if people wanted to talk about it afterwards, I'd be happy to hang around. And then also I would note that we've got a website, which is EngageKalispell.com. So if people wanted to go on there, there's ways of submitting comments. We've got like a pin the map type of an option that's on there. There's a questionnaire where people can look at some of the different housing options that are out there and can kind of indicate which ones they support and which they don't. There's links to our existing documents, to draft documents. And then as we schedule different things, we put that on that website too. So EngageKalispell.com is a good way to stay linked in and know what's going on with that.
Are each of these work sessions and memos on there?
I think there's a link to that there. So, you know, I mean, we've got the records of what was discussed on, on here, and there's ways of accessing that. It sounds like there might be a direct link off of that, and if not, then, you know, it's certainly available for anybody.
I'd also recommend contacting your legislator, asking them questions about it. Since they passed it, so. Anyhow, I guess, anything from the, you guys good with this? Alright, I guess we'll adjourn the work session as well.
Alright, thanks.